Welcome to the Lakewood City Council Agenda for this Monday, December 5, 2022. Madam Clerk, if you'd please call the roll.
Councilmember Anderson has been excused. Councilmember Bell?
Here.
Councilmember Boke?
Here.
Councilmember Branstetter?
Here.
Councilmember Farmer?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Moss?
Here.
And Mayor Whelan?
Present.
Do you have a quorum?
Well, thank you very much. Now, if you'd all please rise and stand with me in a moment of silence and remembrance for our servicemen and women serving this great country overseas as well as at home, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to our nation's flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation under one law, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, Anyo Haseyo. It's good to have all of you here tonight. This is an incredible opportunity for the city of Lakewood to meet with its sister city, Gimhee City, in the Republic of Korea to celebrate establishing a sister-city relationship. This is an auspicious occasion. We are so proud and pleased to have so many members of the delegation from Gimhee City present, and so we are going to have a signing ceremony. And if council will join me behind the table, and members of the delegation from Gimhee City may join us as well, will stand around. I believe Mayor Hong will join me, and Chair of the Council will join me as well at the table.
I am...
You can come behind us. Come behind us for the initial part.
Again, welcome, Anyo Haseyo. Thank you, Mayor Hong, of Gimhee City and your delegation, who are visiting our city of Lakewood to participate in this ceremony to formally sign our sister-city agreement. I believe our friendship-city relationship has greatly supported this moment for Gimhee City and the city of Lakewood. It begins our sister-city relationship as a new beginning of cooperation and joint development between our two cities. I would like to open with an introduction of our council member, including Deputy Mayor Mary Moss, Councilmember Paul Boke, Councilmember Michael Branstetter, Councilmember Patty Bell, and Councilmember Linda Farmer. Also, I'd like to introduce board members from the Lakewood Sister Cities Association, including its president, Connie Coleman Lackety, board members, Michael Branstetter, who's also our council member, Enrico Picardal, Michael Lackety, Herb Stumpf, and James Kim, and Eric Warren. Thank you, Mr. Warren. Mayor Hong?
Yeah.
Would you like to introduce your team before we offer our greetings?
Okay. I'm Mayor of Gimhee, Hong Peeyong. Chairman of Gimhee City Council, Woo-Ming Yul. General Director of Japan Economic Row, Park Sung-Yeon. Secretary of City Council Chairman, Lee Sang-be. Chief Secretary Mayor, Shin Jong-ki. Secretary to Mayor of Political Affairs, Sol Sung-pyeol. Director of Autonomous Administration Division, Han Heung-in. Head of Exchange and Cooperation Team, Lee Jin-dong. International Cooperation Office, Son Un-yul.
Thank you. Thank you. Well, thank you, Mayor Hong. I appreciate very much meeting members of your delegation last evening with members of our council. I'd like to say to the audience members here, as well as those tuning in by Zoom, that the city of Gimhee and Lakewood have shared friendship-city status since 2006. But since that time, Gimhee has demonstrated their commitment to this new family relationship in a very significant way. First, in August of 2020, Gimhee provided the city of Lakewood with 10,000 KF94 masks and 1,000 sets of personal protective equipment, including body suits, N95 masks, gloves, eye protection, and shoe covers to those of us here in the city of Lakewood during the COVID-19 pandemic. Those masks and PPE were donated by Gimhee as their act of support, collaboration, and friendship between our two cities. Those significant items were distributed to residents, our nonprofit businesses, as well as our local businesses, to ensure their sustainability during the pandemic. Those PPE sets were also used by our first responders, including our police and firefighters, for city responses to cleanups involving potential workplace exposures to COVID-19. Their friendship was greatly appreciated. In August of 2021, Gimhee also participated in the celebration of our city's 25th anniversary when we implemented an art contest. Two themes were provided: Love Lakewood and the concept of unity. The contest was originally open to Lakewood residents and Clover Park School District students in grades 1 through 12 and included an adult category. However, during the development of the contest, the city partnered with the Lakewood Sister Cities Association, who invited students from Gimhee South to Korea to participate. As a result, a total of 50 students and adults submitted entries from both the city of Lakewood, and 80 students participated from the city of Gimhee. Each entry included a description, which adds a very personal and meaningful touch to the artwork. We're grateful to our city partners and staff from Gimhee, who translated each of the artwork descriptions. And when the work was initially published, it came out in this beautiful booklet, the City of Art Contest, and specifically, the submissions by the students from Gimhee were included and published. And people absolutely loved the inspiration and themes of unity and family and togetherness. And frankly, the art was just fantastic. People loved it. And I'll let this be passed along, but you look at all of the work from the students of Gimhee, and it was quite touching for all of us to see this. Yeah, it was absolutely touching. So we'll pass this around, but they received top honors for art, so they did a great job there. You're very welcome. Additionally, I think it's important to note that Lakewood's relationship as the gateway city to Joint Base Lewis McCord has strong roots to the Korean Peninsula. Our JBLM Community Connector, the 22, or the Second Stryker Brigade Combat Team, the Lancer Brigade, is the first Stryker unit to serve as a Korea rotational force. They arrived in the Republic of Korea last month to begin a nine-month deployment. This transition provides additional capabilities and flexibilities to respond to aggression and to uphold the ROK-U.S. alliance response. Historically, the Lancer Brigade traces its lineage to the Republic of Korea, having fought in well-known battles such as Chipyong-Ni, Heartbreak Ridge, and the Chosen Reservoir, earning a combined total of 30 campaign streamers, as well as having spent years strengthening the Ironclad Alliance dating back to 1953. And with us this evening is Lieutenant Colonel Bernard West, who is the Lancer Brigade's Deputy Commander. Thank you, sir, for coming tonight, and when we have a photograph, I'd love to have you join us down here with the delegation. Mayor Hong? It is with great pleasure that we have you here tonight. Thank you.
Righties and tips, Ma. And these team guests, it's very nice to meet you. I'm Taeyoung Hong, Mayor of Gimhee. Today, I'm very delighted that the city of Lakewood and Gimhee are having a sister-city agreement ceremony. I'm thankful to Mayor Jason Whelan, the President of Lakewood Sister City Association, Connie Coleman Lackety, and fellow citizens watching us through this video. Lakewood City Council, who invited us and warmly welcomed us. The city of Lakewood and Gimhee started exchange in 2006 and signed a friendship-city agreement in 2007, and have interacted actively since then. While the exchanges were not always smooth in 2010, we resumed our previously relationship in 2019. To further strengthen the ties between two cities, the former mayor of Lakewood, Mr. Dong Anderson, first suggested promoting the sister-city relationship. Gimhee also received approval from Gimhee City Council and started promotion. Unfortunately, due to the COVID-19 pandemic, we failed to sign a sister-city agreement then, and we have been interacting with each other via online. After all these twists and turns today, we finally are signing a sister-city agreement. Changing the relationship between two cities from friendship city to sister city requires a great deal of hard work. I hope to start with informing people of each other's past and present, and developing into social and economic cooperation, as well as cultural, artistic, and sport exchanges. Let's have a great cooperative effort by Lakewood and Gimhee and reap the mutually beneficial reward of sister-city relations. Once again, we would like to thank everyone involved in preparing this event and welcome us to the city. Delayed eight, we wish the city of Lakewood continues prosperity. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now, I believe Connie Coleman Lackety has a greeting. Is that correct, Connie, according to schedule? Ah, goes to the chairman of the council.
안녕하세요. 반갑습니다. 김의 제 회장, 유 맹렬입니다. 레구드 시와 김의 시가 자매 도시가 된 것을 매우 기쁘게 생각합니다.
It is nice to meet you. I'm Woo-Ming Yul, Chairman of Gimhee City Council. I'm very delighted that Lakewood City and Gimhee have become sister cities.
그리고 우리를 환영해주신 제이슨 윌리언 시장님과 콘리 콜맨 자매 도시 위원장님 그리고 영상을 보고 계신 시민 여러분과 레구드 시의 관계자 여러분께 김의 시의를 대파하여 감사의 말씀을 올립니다.
On behalf of the Gimhee City Council, I would like to express my sincere gratitude to Lakewood City Mayor Jason Whelan and President of the Lakewood Sister Cities Association, Connie Coleman Lackety, and fellow citizens watching us through this video, Lakewood City Council, who invited us and warmly welcomed us, and other officials who attended to congratulate us.
김의 시에도 레구드 시와 김의 시가 자매 도시로서 함께 교류하며 성장 발전해 나가기를 진심으로 바라고 있습니다.
The Gimhee City Council also sincerely hopes that Lakewood and Gimhee will grow and develop through mutual exchanges as sister cities.
오늘 이 협약을 통해 양 도시가 관계가 우어 도시에서 자매 도시로 바뀌게 되는데 김의 시에는 김의 시가 레구드 시보다 적극적으로 지속적인 교류를 펼쳐나가기를 기대하고 있습니다.
Today, through this agreement, the relationship between the two cities will change from a friendship to sisterhood, and the Gimhee City Council is expecting more active and continuous exchanges between Gimhee City and Lakewood City.
이번 협약이 양 도시 교류의 큰 전환점이 되기를 바라며 김의 시에도 양 도시의 교류에 기여할 수 있도록 적극 지원하겠습니다.
We hope that this agreement will be a turning point for exchanges between the two cities, and the Gimhee City Council will actively support the exchanges between the two cities.
다시 한번 모든 관계자 여러분께 감사드리며 레구드 시와 시의 그리고 자매 도시 위원의 발전을 기원합니다. 감사합니다.
Once again, I thank all the related personnel, and I wish the city of Lakewood City Council and Lakewood Sister Cities Association the best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, thank you very much, Chairman. It is with a hopeful heart and with the same meaning as expressed by Mayor Hong that our two cities move together and unite on this path of cooperation for shared growth with each other's expectations, wishes, and strong sincerity for a thriving collaborative friendship. With that, I invite Mayor Hong and President Coleman Lackety to join me for the signing of our sister-city agreement. A special pen has been created by, I believe, a local craftsman that represents the unification of this friendship. The wood in these pens is made from both the sister-city tree from Gimhee, I believe the Ginkgo, Ginkgo tree, as well as the city tree, newly anointed city tree for the city of Lakewood, the Gary Oak. And with these pens, we will now sign the agreement. Oh, they're English, and I got it. Okay, so we'll sign the bottom page as well. Thank you. Assume here.
Yeah. Yes.
Yes. Upon the execution of the document formally declaring our two cities as sister cities, we now embrace with gifts. Then for you and the chairman?
Thank you very much.
Sure. Well, thank you. Absolutely. Yeah. That's all good.
I did very nicely.
We can give one of these to each of the members of the delegation. Be great.
Beauty, beauty, soon, young.
Earthwear horn cup and the tape of a warrior on horseback, a representative relic of the royal capital of Gimhee. Fabulous. Oh, beautiful. Oh, well, thank you. Oh, very beautiful. Well, thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you. Beautiful. Now, Mayor, representing our first peoples here in the city and in this area. Right. So carved Indigenous American Nisqually tribe bowl that includes a little bit of information about the history of the spirit box. We stand on the land of our indigenous peoples here in this country, and we respect their elders, and we give gifts to commemorate their presence here and the fact that we celebrate on the land.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Very welcome.
Please.
Bye.
Colonel West, come on down. Okay.
Ah. Wrong. Wrong.
It's the two fingers.
Okay, like that? There you go. Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
And do we have the coins? Okay, hold them up one more time? How do we do that again? Okay. Who grabbed the coins, the city coin? Passed out. We give one to the mayor? Our coin? City coin? Yes, we can do that. Yeah, everyone come on back in. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. The city coin? Yeah. Make sure that you get all the coins. You guys all have a coin? A city coin? Absolutely. And at this time, our friends from Gimhee would like to present some gifts to city staff, following which we will conclude our ceremony and have a recess so that we can all say hello and welcome you, to members of our audience and members of our city. Yeah. Everyone get their city coin?
Ah.
Thanks. Sure you have your coin? Okay, we'll take them if you... Yes. Yeah. Well, ladies and gentlemen of the audience, let's give a grand round of applause for our friends from Gimhee.
For you, Tla.
Give this for you.
I prepared this gift for you.
Well, thank you very much. Well, thank you. Do I open it now or later?
Better, better.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And the Sangun Ki and the Mother of Hope for the business.
Nice.
This is awesome.
Thank you. Very much. Thank you. Yeah, are we done? Is that good? Yeah, so we're going to be at recess for a few minutes so that we can introduce some other dignitaries, including members of our college presidents who are here today, the chancellor from Pierce College until the end of this month, chancellor-elect Julie White, the current president, and we've got Joyce Loveday, our president of Clover Park Technical College, Carol Jacobs, our Clover Park School District Board Director. So please enjoy meeting them, and we will be at recess for the next 10 minutes.
Well, thank you. Thank you again to our friends from Gimhe, our new family. And thank you to members of the audience for your indulgence tonight. It's just a wonderful opportunity to celebrate good stuff, and we try to do as much of that as we can. So next tonight, along with our proclamation and presentation section of tonight's agenda, we are pleased to present and recognize with a proclamation, our heartfelt thank you to Chancellor Michelle Johnson of Pierce College. So if you would join me at the podium, Chancellor?
I have to read this thing?
Of course, okay.
Yes. Hopefully I have my glasses somewhere. We all know Chancellor Johnson as a friend of Lakewood, a friend to many of us, certainly a friend to legions of students that you have led over the years, and personally, a friend of Gail's and mine. And it's wonderful to see you. Not as wonderful to bid you retirement adios. I don't think we're gonna let you go.
Well, I think I'm going, but.
Well, on behalf of the city council, we are pleased to have this time with you tonight, Michelle, to present this proclamation and to give you a formal thank you for an incredible job well done. Whereas Michelle Johnson, Ph.D., was a graduate of Tacoma's Lincoln High School, holds a Bachelor of Science and Master of Art degrees in political, police science, and administration from Washington State University. She earned her Ph.D. in educational policy and management from the University of Oregon, and attended the Institute for Educational Management at Harvard University. And whereas Dr. Johnson committed her life and career to Pierce College, whereas she served for forty-five years, she doesn't look near that old.
Sounds good.
Exactly, including fifteen years as a faculty member, six years as president of Pierce College at Fort Sillicum, and seventeen years as chancellor of the Pierce College District. And whereas, under her strong leadership, Pierce College was selected twice by the prestigious Aspen Institute as a top-ten finalist for its one-million-dollar Excellence in Community College Prize. And whereas, in addition to Aspen's recognition, highlights of Dr. Johnson's tenure include achieving the dreams prestigious National Lea, Meyer, Austin, and Leader College of Distinction Awards for supporting student success, the Military Times Best for Vets Awards, the doubling of graduation rates, the expansion of state-of-the-art facilities on the campuses of both Fort Sillicum and Puyallup, innovative programs across our diverse community, including Joint Base Lewis McCord, and the relentless pursuit of the mission to eliminate areas of inequities and to build an inclusive institution. And whereas, Dr. Johnson was recognized as a woman of influence by the Business Examiner in its first selection in nineteen ninety-nine, she was named one of the twenty people to watch in the new century by the News Tribune in two thousand, and was named CEO of the Pacific Region by the Association of Community College Trustees in two thousand sixteen. And whereas throughout her esteemed and distinguished career, Michelle Johnson has proven to be a collaborative leader, building partnerships with other institutions of higher education, K through twelve school districts, business and industry, and community-based organizations, not the least of which includes the City of Lakewood. And whereas, Dr. Johnson is active in the community, serving on the boards of the Tacoma Pierce County Chamber of Commerce, the Greater Metro Parks Foundation, the Gottfried and Mary Fuchs Foundation, and the Lakewood's Promise Advisory Board, and is a member of Tacoma Rotary Eight. Now therefore, the Lakewood City Council congratulates Michelle Johnson, Ph.D., on her retirement and expresses our deepest gratitude and most heartfelt appreciation for forty-five years of service that she has given to Pierce College and the lasting impact she has made on so many lives here in the Lakewood community. Proclaim this fifth day of December twenty-twenty-two with great pride, Jason Whalen, Mayor. And Michelle, on behalf of all of us, to all of you, we don't give out a lot of keys because the doors are hard to open, but we do have a key to the City of Lakewood, presented to Michelle Johnson, Ph.D., for her exceptional leadership and commitment to higher education.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. That's large enough.
Well, thank you so much. You know, I was in Lakewood before Lakewood was Lakewood. And it has been just an honor really to work with all of you. You know, so seldom do we think about when we start a career that will be there forty-five years later. When I actually started my career at Joint Base Lewis McCord for Pierce College, which was then Pierce College, was Fort Sillicum Community College. And as you know, the military is a really important part of who we are, and so it was great to see the military represented as well. I have been to Gimhe, and we have a number of sister college relationships throughout Asia, and particularly in Korea. I've been there eight times. So I hope that we can build on the partnership that occurred tonight and see if there are ways in which we can provide educational opportunities for the residents and to come and to study with us. I am, I love Pierce College. It has been an amazing place to be. When you think about who we serve, and it's always important for us to think first about our mission, and Mayor, you mentioned a few words about that, but I really want to put it into the space because we do that all the time at Pierce College because it directs what we do. And it has three really important components to create quality educational opportunities for a diverse community of learners to thrive in evolving world. And as we have been doing this work and really setting in place our measures around that, we weren't always achieving what we would like to do. And when we really looked at our data, our data of completion, it wasn't where we wanted to be. And so together, we really were vocal about that. And as we went into the pandemic, not only of COVID, but the unfortunate pandemic that is across our country, or the violence that is perpetrated against individuals of color, we had to even be more deliberate in spelling out what it is that we needed to do to meet mission, and that was to declare that we wanted to build through bravery, care, and purpose, an anti-racist institution. Now, some people are afraid of those words, and we know that they have pushed back at us at times. But I think it's important to take a stand on what is important to us. And as you look across Lakewood, we know that there are many populations that are not as visible as they need to be. And I would encourage the city to continue your efforts to bring those communities forward and to give them the opportunities because we are all richer by the work that they are able to bring to us. The, all of the, you think about the cultural pieces that we heard tonight, and we think about all of the communities within Lakewood that have made us who we are. I think one of the things that I've appreciated so much has been working in the collaboration. I see Mary Dodsworth over there, and Ellie, who sits on Lakewood's Promise. I was one of the original founding people of Lakewood's Promise and believe strongly in what it is that we do, that young people will have an opportunity. And it's really everyone's responsibility to do that. As I think about the work at Pierce College, you know, we're more than looking at young people. The age distribution is quite wide. At our last graduation, our youngest graduate was sixteen, and our oldest was seventy-four. Sixty-eight percent of our students are the first in their families to go to college, and we make a difference not only for that student, but for the entire family of that student and then the community overall. We also know that fifty-two percent of our students are considered BIPOC. We also unfortunately know that fifty-plus percent of them have housing insecurity and forty-five percent have food insecurity. So these are the students that we're working with every day, and it has been just an honor for me to be part of Pierce College and to know that you have always embraced us within the City of Lakewood. And we're pleased to be a partner with you and will continue. With me tonight, I want to introduce Dr. Julie White, who is the current president of Pierce College, Fort Sillicum, but as of January one, will be the new chancellor and CEO. So Julie, I have a hundred percent confidence in your ability to take us to the next level. And with Julie is Dr. Matthew Campbell, who is our interim president at our Puyallup campus. And so we form a fantastic team. Walt, who was a former longtime Pierce College employee, we are so glad to have you. And pointing out Joyce, of course, Joyce loved you. We have an amazing relationship with Clover Park Technical College. We serve on Lakewood's Promise together, but we also know that we're in collaboration. We're not in, we're not in competition with each other. There are sixty thousand adults in Pierce County without a high school diploma, and there are only thirty-seven percent of individuals in Pierce County who have some post-secondary education. We always talk about the fact that there is not enough seats in our institutions to serve all of those individuals, so we should not be in competition. We should be thinking together of how to create a college-going culture and to be there to support folks. So I want to thank you for the key to the city. I continue, you know, I will continue to live in Pierce County. It's my home, and I'm gonna be doing some traveling and some other things. But I always have said back at the college, I'm not gonna interfere. I know some of you probably think that is really not true. But I'm not gonna interfere, but I will always be available to, to be here to support your efforts. You just need, well, I'm not gonna say all the time. I just told Ellie that I'm not gonna make long-term commitments to anything, but I will make short-term commitments to, to many things. Thank you so much for this proclamation. It really is an honor. And Jason, thank you and Gail for being host families to our many international students. Prior to COVID, we had over five hundred international students from forty different countries studying at Pierce College, and we hope to get back to that number as the world gets back into some sense of being open again. So thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you. Thank you again. And we'll take a photograph down here? Well, continuing with our focus on education this evening, I am pleased to welcome our friends with the Youth Council, Angel Ramirez. You're presenting tonight.
Good evening to Mayor Whalen, Deputy Mayor Moss, and the council. My name is Angel, and I'm here with Ariana Mello to give our monthly Youth Council report. Today's meeting was the beginning of a busy week for the, for the Youth Council. We spent our time preparing for the roundtable on homelessness at Clover Park on Friday and the Christmas Parade of Lights on Saturday. Over fifteen of our members have volunteered to show up on Saturday to wear costumes, march with the Lakewood's Promise float, and otherwise help out to keep the holiday spirit alive at our parade.
Youth Council is also going to show up in force to our Youth Roundtable, and we're excited to facilitate discussion on homelessness in Lakewood to help students from all walks of life in the city gain a more nuanced and grounded perspective on an issue that impacts so many. Beyond that, we have started looking towards the future, and we spent time today considering future roundtable discussions, topics like environmental sustainability, sex education, and police enforcement. Accountability, my bad. We believe that tackling controversial issues head-on, we can break down taboos and have a healthy, productive conversations.
Lastly, the deadline for Youth Council members to submit their applications to the scholarship offered by the city has passed. And before we send them off for approval, we're going to review these applications in the coming weeks so we can send the very best of what we have to offer to the city council.
Thank you so much for your time. I look forward to seeing all of you at the parade. And me and Angel are here to answer any questions.
Well, thank you very much for the report. Do we have questions by members of the council? Deputy Mayor Moss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say I'm happy to hear that you have fifteen people to participate in the parade. Thank you so much.
There may be the Grinch there as well as Santa, so be prepared, is all I can say. So, thank you for your work. We appreciate you and look forward to working with you as you develop the context and contours and content of the Youth Summit in the spring. That'll be a fantastic program. So thanks for that.
Thank you.
All right. Take care. Good night. Next, we have the Clover Park School District report with our Clover Park School District Board member, Carol Jacobs.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Whalen, what a way to start, and, and city council. It's always an honor for me to be here. I love sharing our good news with you, and tonight is absolutely no different. We've just completed our student-led conferences, and we're very pleased to say that in the elementary schools, we had close to ninety-five percent at all schools. What schools did this year is they made sure they were available in the evening. They made sure they were available online, so we had a major participation. Also, in the secondary schools, we were like eighty-seven percent. So we really did have great engagement between parents, student, and then, and their staff. So it was a student-led conference, so they got to talk about where they are and where they might need to be going, or what they're proud of and what they need to be working on. So those are always very successful, and it was always a very exciting for us. I know Michelle left, but I think it's very important. One of the things about our district is our attempt to always make sure that our children are educated to have choices, be it to go to a four-year college, two-year college, to work, or the military. So the partnership that we've had with Pierce College through our Run and Start program, and we have many kids have graduated, and you hear when we're discussing graduation rates, how many of them in fact are going to Pierce College, be it up on the hill or out in Puyallup. So we're really appreciative of that partnership, and we know that with Julia, we'll continue. For the very first time, our district and the city is celebrating three daffodil princesses. Harrison Prep had their first princess this year, and after January, the girls start their training, and then the spring, they will be doing things every weekend, and then the spring, they will be three girls representing Lakewood and the Clover Park School District through the parade and all the activities, the library reading, visiting the schools. They really have those daffodil princesses very busy. This last weekend, Harrison Prep just completed their presentation of a Christmas Carol, and it was very well done. It was well-attended, and I'm very proud of the students for, you know, it takes a lot to get up there and do it, and Harrison Prep did a great job. Proud to say that Saturday, I'm sure we'll be joining you all with the parade, and hopefully Clover Park people will, you know, trying to get schools to come out and have as many people representing the district in the parade. This last week, Sedexo Food Services, they are their food service that provides all the foods for our, our students. They had what they call Future Chefs Competition. We started out with, I think, seventy-two chefs, and they submitted, they submitted a recipe, and then they narrowed that down to, I think, twenty-eight. And these twenty-eight students, after school, got out. They went over to our auxiliary building and made their, their recipe for us. Now, I had the opportunity to be the judge, one of the judges, and I will admit, sometimes there's lots of smoothies. And this year, there weren't so many smoothies. I know that the grand winner was a Cajun penny pasta, and we had amazing tacos and quesadillas. We had, the kids presented, it was from desserts to appetizers to main dishes. I always ask the question, because I want to make sure mom's not, you know, cooking, why did you choose this recipe? And this year, unlike many others, the answer was, this has been my grandma's recipe. So she goes, and I said, well, do you make that at home? Yeah, we make this at home. So the kids were really into the foods that they made as opposed to, my mom told me I had to do this. So it was really exciting to get, I, I looked for that. I looked for what is a student-generated thing, and we had some, there were some great chefs. They, they got great prizes, and these kids, this is for fourth and fifth graders at the elementary level. This spring, we'll be doing a secondary student, future chef, which is kind of new. Due to COVID, it's the first time we've had one in two years, so fun, fun evening. We don't usually have to have late starts this early in the year, and we will, we want everybody to know that if you're on the Clover Park page, Facebook page, it will be announced there. We try to get the ticker on the TV stations as soon as possible. It is decided by, we have a lot of hills out at, out at JBLM, and one of the other main hills is Far West. If we can't get, they start driving at five o'clock in the morning. If they can't get their, get a car, we're assuming that we can't get a bus. If we can't get buses and cars safely on the roads, we will at least delay it, and then if we have to, we will cancel it. Last week, we all were surprised with a snow blizzard that started at quarter to seven, and our high school students are there at twenty after seven. So, you know, the district went and did what they had to do, making sure that our kids are safe, because that certainly is the priority for what we are doing. Winter sports have begun, which means it'll be girls' and boys' basketball, swimming, wrestling, and so the students will have the opportunity to participate in as many, as the sport of their choice. The other thing that's kind of excited, and I know I've spoken to, oh, one other thing before I move on. We are having a parent educator fair this Thursday at Clover Park at the SSC in our main district. Like so many agencies and so many businesses, we are still short-staffed. We need people for bus drivers. We need people for food service. We need people for parent edgers in the classroom. If you know of anybody, or if somebody is looking for, basically, it's kind of a part-time job because it's school hours only, promising no weekends, and of course, most of our kids, most of our kids are not, most of our staff are not working this summer. We are, we are offering bonuses, our buses, we don't have enough, we're really hard-pressed to have all our buses running on, on any day. Last year, we oftentimes have principals in the classroom because we don't have enough substitutes to be in the classroom. And so if you know of anybody who's working for a job that's student hours, please, please, please encourage them to come, come talk to us because we certainly are looking for all of those positions. One of the most exciting things that happens, and it will happen again this Thursday, Wednesday and Thursday, I think, the anonymous donor has graciously donated for the last thirty-five years twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars worth of clothing every year through the Clover Park School District. The counselors will come into the building on Wednesday and take, they'll have their students' names of who they need and who are the neediest and the greatest need, and take items, shoes, pants, sweaters, shirts, coats, socks, and underwear, because it's, you know, lots of people do coat dry. Our kids don't have socks. They don't have, they don't have warm things that they need to carry them through. So the anonymous donor is, for the thirty-fifth year, gracing our children with, with what they need. And the anonymous part comes from, and I know I shared this last year, he was, he grew up in poverty and didn't, you know, didn't have anything. And his whole philosophy is that children should never have to say thank you for basic needs. Now, yes, they should be gracious, and they should take this and do something with it. But a child is a child, and they need to be taken care of because they're children, and they need to be taken care of. So that will be happening this week. Now, I'm sure, I hope all of you got your insight skills. I hope it took a minute to read it. I would like to share with you some of the highlights. In our district now, fifteen languages are spoken. We have twelve thousand seven hundred and thirty-six students, and a thirty-two percent, thirty-three percent of those are military-connected. We have our staff, you know, when you work for the Clover Park School District, you're changing and you're helping the children's lives every day. We have, our class student-teacher ratio is sixteen point four to one, and we know the biggest closing denominator is small class size. And so through, it's contractually, we will honor that, sixteen point four. Now, that's even, not as, our K-one-twos are even lower. So we are very proud of that fact that we have got that low student ratio for our students. We have a hundred and thirty-two National Board certified teachers, and we're very proud of that. Unfortunately, many of our certified, many of our National Board teachers are military-impacted, so we don't get to keep them. And, but we have training that goes on year, all year long to support and help those teachers who want to take their profession to the next step. The other thing, and I just, I want to share this with you because I think there's misinformation out about our graduation rates and the opportunities that our kids have. This last year, our graduation rate, well, let me, let me back up. In twenty nineteen, it was seventy-nine point two. This last year, it's over eighty-eight percent. Now, I want to share that because there are people making, saying that the graduation rate isn't high enough. You know what? It's not high enough because it's not a hundred percent. The state rate is eighty-two point nine. So I just want to share with you that I know good things are happening, especially at our secondary levels, and we do have that eighty-eight percent graduation rate, which I know I'm proud of. I just returned from a state meeting, and, you know, we talk about COVID recovery. I'm sure you've heard much about it. Statewide, we know that this recovery, especially for secondary students, is a three-to-five-year process. We need to let these kids get back into school. Emotionally, they're still, I'm gonna use the phrase traumatized, traumatized. They in fact are struggling every day. Our staff is slowing down, instead of just hitting the books and going, we have to slow down and bring the children in. We make sure that relationship is there. And they know that this school is a safe place for them to be so that they can then go on ahead and learn. So I'm proud of that. I'm, I'm proud of our rates. I'm proud of every staff member who is, be it teacher. So I'm proud of that. I'm, I'm proud of our rates. I'm proud of every staff member who is, be it teacher, para, food service. They're giving their all and they're giving their best. So thank you to all of our staff. So that being said, any questions, comments?
The only comment I would have is, is thank you. I know that the district is working very hard. It's, it's always my hope that when we're embracing and nourishing those that need a little extra help, that those who are doing okay are pushed to the extent that they can be pushed so they can achieve what they want to achieve as well.
Absolutely. We must educate, educate our children, all of our students, so they have options. They can choose their option, but they must have an option. So we don't just gear them toward one, down one path. Say, oh, you're not this, you're going to be that. No, that's not us. We educate each children so they have the options. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you coming in tonight. Well, ladies and gentlemen, that concludes our proclamation and presentation section of this evening's agenda. We now turn to public comments. Public comments are accepted by mail, email, or by live virtual or in-person comment. Comments may be submitted in advance by mail or email to the city clerk, Rihanna Schumacher, at our city address, six thousand Main Street Southwest here in Lakewood, or to her email address, bshumacher@cityoflakewood.us. Comments received up to an hour before the meeting have been provided to the council electronically. And as is our practice, the city clerk will read the names of those who have submitted comments in advance.
Mayor, we received written comments in advance from Angela Sheek and Kim Underwood.
Very good. And as I often say, if you are here and you've submitted written comments, it doesn't preclude you from making oral comments if you wish, but just know that we have received the written comments and we thank you for that. Members of the audience may comment on items relating to any matter pertaining to city business under the public comment period. Comments are limited to three minutes per person. If you'd like to make virtual public comments, you'll need to join the Zoom meeting as an attendee by dialing the phone number on the screen and entering the meeting ID number as indicated and using the star nine feature to use the raise the hand to be called upon. What I typically try to do is call on those one week in person and then the next batch on Zoom and then flip it so that everyone gets a chance to, to be first. Tonight, I'm going to call on those who are here in person first, who have signed in to speak, followed by those who have signed in to speak or will sign in to speak, using the raise the hand feature on Zoom. So I have two sign-in sheets and I will read from the top to the bottom of those who have signed in indicating, yes, they wish to speak. Please know that doesn't preclude you. If you didn't get a chance to sign in the sheet, I'll welcome you up anyway. You just have to queue up to the, the microphone. Please state your, your name and your residence record so that we can maintain a good record. And limit your comments to three minutes. First is Walt Summers.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Walt Summers. I live in Oak Brook. You'd like my address as well?
And just Lakewood is fine. Lakewood, Washington is good.
I'm the president of the board of LASSA and I'm here to share why we think the Gravelly Lake Commons is an important low income, is important to low-income citizens of Lakewood. The funding we are securing now is to provide twenty-five, one, two, and three-bedroom units to be built at Fifty-Ninth Street Southwest in Fairland in Lakewood. The complex will be able to provide housing to singles and families that are at risk of experiencing homelessness or may have experienced or are now homeless and are working with a rapid rehousing program, which comes with case management. This is a step in the right direction for our low-income citizens. Low income is anyone making eighty percent or less than the average of median income is determined by the U.S. Census data. These units are at thirty percent to fifty percent of the average median income, which means that the affordable housing for those in the low and extremely low income bracket. And that's all my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Linda Disney, next.
Mayor Whalen, members of the council, thank you for allowing me to be here today. Again, I am Linda Disney with Support the Enlisted Project. I reside in Furcrest. I just wanted to take another opportunity to explain what STEP does. We provide assistance for young military families who find themselves in a financial crisis, like being eviction, repossession, perhaps utility disconnection or such. We have applied for a grant through the Human Services Funding and I would like to encourage you at this time to include STEP on your recommendations. As I've looked over those that have been recommended, over a hundred K has been recommended towards food insecurity. Approximately a hundred K has been recommended towards housing insecurity. I think it was about sixty-five K towards mental health. All of these things are very, very important and all need to be addressed. I would not say remove any of them. However, I would like to say one of the differences that STEP has is rather than only providing a handout for those types of situations, we do provide a hand up. In other words, we work with financial education and counseling through social workers who are certified in financial education to help our young military families get themselves out of that situation and on a good credit history track. We have a ninety-two percent success rate and we'd love to continue to grow here in Lakewood. As has been said tonight, we are right here at the gateway to JBLM. And of course, it is where we practice here in the state the most. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Joyce Love Day.
Hello, my name is Joyce Love Day and I am a board member of LASSA. I'm also the president of Clover Park Technical College. And I'm here, I live in Lakewood, Washington, and I'm here to speak briefly about the Gravelly Lake Commons and the importance for our city. You know, homelessness and is something that we see only the tip of the iceberg when we look around us, but it goes so much deeper in terms of people who have housing insecurity and people who aren't sure if they're going to have a place to live. In a report that I'm sure you're familiar with through United Way, it's the Alice Report that was completed and updated in twenty twenty, it was noted that in Pierce County, thirty-one percent of the residents of Pierce County are either at poverty level and if not at poverty level, they are, excuse me, less than the basic cost of living, that they don't meet the Alice threshold. So thirty-one percent don't meet the Alice threshold, which is asset limited, income constrained and employed. When you look at the statistics that they present about Lakewood, it's fifty-nine percent. So we know we have need in our community and that's, those are the individuals that LASSA is serving. They're assuring with resources, with support and with housing. As we look at through Clover Park, we've seen an increasing number of students with, that are experiencing homelessness and housing insecurity. In a study done in two thousand nineteen, it was a national study that we participated in. And we found of the students who participated that twenty-four percent are homeless and seventy percent experience housing insecurity. We know that housing insecurity is statistically linked to poor grades in college. I'm sure that's at the high school level as well and grade school level. So it's statistically linked to poor grades and lower rates of degree completion, as well as an increased risk of unemployment. It's also not surprising that researchers have also noted a clear relationship between basic needs insecurity and mental health issues, such as depression and above-average stress. I very much thank the, the city council for the support that you have provided for many years, both in, in thought for LASSA and we ask that you continue to support the Gravelly Lake Commons with funding. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, Jan Hutchins.
You're too tall, Joyce. Good evening. My name is Jan Hutchins. Hello, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Thank you for letting me speak to you tonight. Last week, I had the opportunity to join via Zoom and heard the discussion about the the project that Walton Joyce have spoken about. And I thought there was some misunderstanding and I was hoping to clarify a couple of points. First of all, you also talked about the village and I'm very happy to hear that you're in support of the village because I think it's critically needed. Whenever we have a new idea on how to work with this ever-growing homelessness, I think that's great. I'm hoping that you'll be working with the village as well as permanent housing and affordable housing because they're both very necessary. One of the points I heard, however, was that perhaps you should buy a building. And I just want you to know, we thought about that before, but when you think about buying a building, it comes with a lot of costs that you may or may not be aware of, including you have to provide a subsidy for up to sixty months for every individual there. That can be a half million dollars right there. Then we have to rehab it, et cetera. We have a friend of the agency who did a search for us this week and there just isn't any appropriate buildings out there for us to buy if, if we chose to do that. Another reason we want to build is when you think about the, let's pay Peter to, I'm forgetting that, rob Peter to pay Paul. Well, if we move people into, if we buy a building, then what we're doing is we're displacing people. So I think it's really important that we build something and add to the amount of housing we have and not move people out so that we can move other people in. Thirdly, one of the other points that came up was, what about services? Well, we will be offering services and what I did, if you could hand out that, the sheet, I provided, oh, thank you. I provided something to show you the services that we will be offering. We can no longer mandate services, so we try to use motivational interviewing to get people interested in wanting to come and serve. Lastly, I keep hearing that we wish we had transitional housing. Transitional housing is no longer funded by HUD because they think that rapid rehousing is a, is a better deal. So it's not an option and I'm hoping that you will consider our proposal. We would be able to leverage three and a half million dollars from Pierce County and bring it into the community. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jan. Next on the sign-in sheet, Taylor Underwood.
Thank you, Mayor Whalen, council members. I am speaking on behalf of a member of the Spanaway Concerned Citizens Group. The location selected for the Community First Village is that of former Cross Base Highway, which was shut down due to funding and made more costly because of the environmental concerns and lawsuits. According to the report by the News Tribune, the project became contentious in two thousand and ten when a lawsuit, when a lawsuit was filed by groups that contended environmental study, ignoring the project would destroy, ignored the project that would destroy one of the region's largest remaining tracks of oak woodland prairie. Further, in two thousand and seventeen, the federal government rescinded the endorsement and environmental impact statement include, included concerns the route passes near western gray squirrel habitat as well as other wildlife habitat. Additionally, we are concerned for the success of the overall mission and safety of the community. The proposal, the proposal by TRM is modeled by Austin, by an Austin community. Yet, there are many differences that hinder the, the Community First Village. Costly site development and maintenance because of the unique challenges of building in a large wetland with unused sixty-plus acres to manage, including fencing and security. Long distance from utility hookups, the village will be landlocked with only one long access road. Washington State holds near, notably different housing and human rights policies than Texas. This means that the encounter significantly harder eviction and squandering laws when community standards are not kept. TRM has stated that there will not be strict requirements for residents to be clean and sober or require individuals to seek mental help or addiction help. This location is isolated deep in the woods, far from all community resources. It is also a known black bear habitat that includes cougars and coyotes. These elements create dangerous environments, especially during emergencies, creating additional hazards for law enforcement, firefighters and homeless camp seeking refuge. With all the problems inherent in the location, including environmental concerns, violation of local and federal law and concerns for the success and overall mission safety of the community and high-risk irresponsible use of millions, millions of dollars of public funding. It is worth, it is a worthy and compassionate cause. However, the proposed location is fraught with significant costly problems. A better location must be found and can be advocated by the Lakewood City Council. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, Kim Underwood.
Good evening, Mr. Whalen, council members. Thank you very much for the time. Recently, I found myself recommending to neighborhood communities that they follow the example of the City of Lakewood's Affordable Housing Plan. The Gravelly Lake Commons is a well-calculated plan that will provide much-needed assistance for struggling families. Unfortunately, Pierce County is not necessarily following your lead. Although the Community First tiny home village does have merit, we should support it only if it's constructed in a suitable location. Instead, what we found was eighty-six acres of only twenty-seven are buildable. Proposed building site lies within a federally protected wetland, will require environmental impact statements. The Hawalia Aquatis, I believe it's called, has been noted and is protected by Washington State ESA. There's no sewer hookup availability. This project will add to the water nutrient load of our watershed system, of which we are a part of. Little to no access for public transportation. nearest pharmacy and grocery store are miles away. Tacoma Mission Rescue Mission estimates that they will need two-point-five to three million a year. Sixty-five percent of funding is private, thirty-five percent of government funding. This is per the TNT. Thirty percent, this is thirty percent of the TRM operating budget. HUD will only fund housing, or will not fund housing rather, in a federally protected wetland area. And we were also told that we were allegedly that we, we could avoid the permit process by special design. However, proficient wildlife will require hydraulic permits. Army Corps of Engineers will require fill permits. Pierce County does not even maintain the existing culverts along the perimeter road. Property is not securely located. Modeled after a farming community in Texas, phosphates will exacerbate current water quality issues within the Spanaway Lake, which is already having a problem. I have personally walked this site and I provided photos for all of you. I really would encourage all of you to get out there and put your boots on because that's what it's going to take. Every effort should be made to locate homeless shelters in the area and develop infrastructure, much like the tiny home village on Orchard Street in Tacoma. These villages must be secure and above all maintained. Residents must have access to food, water, power and sanitation. Instead, this proposed building site lies within a federally projected wetland, federal overlay of the Chambers Clover Creek watershed and provides none of the above. Therefore, the City of Lakewood should place a halt on Tacoma Rescue Mission's request for one million dollars of the ARPA funding until a suitable location is found. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Christina Maneri.
Hello, Mayor Whalen and City Council members. I'd like to also ask that you not approve $1 million of ARPA funding for the Tiny Home Project, oh, sorry, in Spanaway because there are serious environmental questions there, not only questions but problems that are not really solvable. That's not a suitable place to put such a huge 250-plus, I think it was 270 of the micro homes. It's also kind of an inhumane approach to this problem. I don't think that amassing over 200 of these people who are houseless and need a lot of help in one place, I don't think that that's a good solution. And it's not a transitional program. It's permanent housing, as I understand it. And as permanent housing, it's more like sheds. There are no kitchens or bathrooms in those buildings, I mean, building sheds. So I really don't think that that's a suitable place. And I ask that you don't approve that money tonight. But mostly here, I'm tonight to present the petition to you to save the Lakewood Library that we've been collecting since May, since it was announced that it was going to be closed. It wasn't just me. I collected at the library. The last week it was open. And then a few other people were also collecting physical signatures and then also online. So the first page has the text that the people read before they signed the petition. And then we have 461 signatures online and then 500 signatures, physical signatures. So it's a total of 961 signatures supporting the preservation of the old Tensor Library Building. I'd just like to read a few of the comments that are in the back. There are 143 comments that people made and some of them are quite touching. I'll try to read into the microphone. "The Lakewood Library has always been a jewel in the crown of Lakewood. The Lakewood Library has always been a wealth of information and excellent resource, especially for the underserved in the Lakewood community where there are many people who cannot afford internet access. Please think of the Lakewood community and restore the Lakewood Library." The historic, oh, "I worked at this library for several years. It has been the flagship of PCLS and must be saved. It is important not only to Lakewood but to the entire county." The Lakewood Library, oh, I could read you the names as well, but you can see them. "The Lakewood Library is a local institution and part of the region's special history. Its preservation is essential now more than ever as the area has few historical landmarks, especially during a time of rapid cookie-cutter commercial development. This facility deserves to be cherished and shared. Personally, as a student, I spent countless hours there studying socializing and exploring new interests, all before the internet was available. To close a library would be a huge detriment to the area and would deprive others of learning and admiring an irreplaceable part of our local history." So I'd like to leave this with you and please read the comments before you make any decisions.
Next, James Dunlop.
Hi, my name is James Dunlop and I'm a resident of Lakewood. Two weeks ago, I talked about the library and I strongly advocated de-annexation. I listened to the city council's comments afterwards, particularly Council Member Anderson's comments about de-annexation. He said two things which are not quite contradictory, but he said on one hand, he talked about 10 years of poor relationship, a poor relationship between the city and Pierce County library system. At the same time, he also said he did his calculations and he didn't think, he thought it would be too expensive. So you've got a money issue here and I do understand that you've got a budget and you are concerned about the financial implications of de-annexation. At the same time, you have a dysfunctional relationship, you know, like a marriage, whatever. It's not working. Do you stay in a marriage which has gone completely bad just because money? Because you haven't got enough money to break up? Isn't it time to really think about how you're going to de-annex and be open about what is needed and also be imaginative? I don't know. I don't have all the details. You know, you will have the details. Unfortunately, you might get advice telling you that you can't de-annex, but I'm sure there is a way of doing it. And it is important. You know, we just heard about, you know, from the Clover Park School District and, you know, Lakewood has lost its library. And Lakewood's, the education in Lakewood is bad. There are 15 school districts in Clover Park, sorry, in Pierce County. And in terms of math and English, Clover Park is 14th out of 15. You know, forget the graduation rates. If you actually look at English, math, you look at the numbers who are up standard, Clover Park School District is absolutely rock bottom. And so, and then it's going to lose its library. And it would seem that Pierce County weren't really thinking about that. They're going to, this city really needs a library. Lakewood, Pierce County library system doesn't seem to care. And so, bearing in mind that 10 years of a dysfunctional relationship and what you're about to go through, I think you need to de-annex right now and I think you do need to start the process. Please, I think Lakewood needs it to happen. Plus, you're going to be, you've got 20,000 new homes coming. You can have your own library. Just go and do it.
That is the last individual who has signed up on the sheet to speak to the councilor in the public comment period. But as I indicated, that doesn't preclude you. If you'd like to step up to the podium, feel free. Now's the opportunity. Ellie, you're inching forward. Feel free.
Good evening, Mayor Whalen and council members. And I am pleased to be here to greet you again this evening. I simply would like to, well, I live here in Lakewood. I need to do that, don't I? Live here in Lakewood, Washington. I chair the Lakewood Promiser Advisory Committee for the council. Andy Gurnan and I are currently co-chairs of the Claudia Thomas Legacy House Project. And we had come before you in the spring with the idea and with the plans to take that project forward, which we have done. So tonight, I would simply like to give you an update. And at this point, the residents of this city have been very generous and have provided us with $84,000 out of the $100,000 that is our goal. So at this time, the partnership that we have with Habitat for Humanity has been absolutely wonderful. They are handling all of the finances and we are hoping to bring this first phase of the project to an end by the end of this month. So we're urging all of our citizens in Lakewood who have pledged or who are about to pledge to please do so before the end of this month, if it's at all possible. We would love to see that happen because the second phase of this project is going to entail the actual building of this legacy house in the Tillicum neighborhood of Lakewood. So that's all I have to say tonight, to let you know that things have gone well and to encourage our residents to help us meet the deadline and finish up the deed and the project. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any others in the audience who wish to address council during the public comment period who are physically here? Otherwise, I'll turn to those who are attending via Zoom or appearing via Zoom. Looks like we have two. Mr. Haugen.
Dennis Haugen of Sioux Falls, previously from Lakewood, Washington. Really just two. What gets in your way is some very bad policies and they're keeping you down, in my opinion. And those two are, one of them is, can't necessarily control from there, but at least you can voice your opinion. One of them is their sanctuary state. It's hard to get my mind around why you would in 2018 vote for a sanctuary city and then in 2000 vote for a president who invited people to come across the border illegally. Where do you think all of those millions, now it's millions, are going? And the fentanyl crisis is, you see, in this country, we handle chemicals very carefully and the way we transport them, but of course, fentanyl is not handled carefully. It's run by a criminal organization. Then just, just one story after another, just this week, a 10-month-old baby, by just touching the ground, became overcome by fentanyl. And so that's a big part of the problem. And you don't speak against it, so guess where, there's all, half the states don't want it and you seem to support it. The other thing is, get rid of critical race theory. Now, I know you have the school board come there and I think many years ago, you once recognized there was a problem and you were going to do something. Well, you let them come in there on their terms. They should be talking to you on your terms. And your term should be, quit telling people that are underprivileged that they're victims. If you're going to tell a child that he's a victim and he can't make it, what incentive does he have to learn when historically, the way you got out of poverty and made a better life for yourself was get an education? But that's not, that's not what's happening. So you need to, basically, I wouldn't let him talk to you for this 10 minutes every month unless they talked about the poor kids, the kids that are not getting, not getting the math and the reading they need to get, go out and be successful. And you gotta, you're just not a challenging group. You know, you probably just sit there and listen. But you need to get rid of critical race theory. And if the school board doesn't talk, tell them you're not welcome.
Thank you. Next, Scott Munson.
Good evening. Thank you for your time. I'm Scott Munson. I've been staying in Spender Lake water quality for over 10 years now. I'm currently, I'm a municipal advisory board for the newly-created Spender Lake Management District out of Pierce County. And I'm also a past board member of Friends of Spender Lake. That group is working very hard to try to clean up what is a very sick lake. The proposed homeless village is physically connected to Spender Lake via landlands and the south end of the lake. Many of us are opposed to the location of the village. We are not opposed to the concept of helping less fortunate citizens. We're opposed to the location of this project. The lake is very, very sick. We can have up to 200 algae bloom rains, 200 days of algae bloom rains a year, and it's been that way for quite some time. I think it should be noted that the Spender Lake residents have recently vowed to create the county's first lake management district. This is a taxing district and intent on settling Spender Lake from further damage. We vowed to increase our property taxes because we recognize it's an effective way to help get this lake fixed. That would meant to recognize the good work of Pierce County in regards to managing American management district under the leadership of Tom Clanks and Austin Jennings from the Stormwater Management Department. The county will soon be applying remedies for aquatic weeds and after that, we expect remedies for improved water quality sooner after. This is real momentum, but we've got to keep that momentum going. And I would also like to thank the Coeur d'Alene for her continued support of Spender Lake. While we support the county's efforts to house our less fortunate citizens, we do not support the location of the proposed homeless village. It's on a federally protected wetland and our studies have shown that septic systems are a major contributor to the water quality of Spender Lake. And we're just astonished that this project has been proposed in a federally protected wetland. It's a bad idea and we urge this county to vote no with regards to the conditional expenditure of $1 million. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. Next, looks like Ado Equitas.
My name's Ado Equitas. I'm the chairman of the Panther Party. I hate to agree with Dennis Haugen, but there's two things that I agree with him on. One, yeah, we need to get rid of critical race theory because the slavery and subjugation of the black community is not a theory, it's fact. So let's get that clear. The second one is, yeah, a lot of the issues that we're having in the city are due to policies and procedures within the city. I don't know how this continues to happen, where somebody comes up and says, hey, I got a good idea and there's no way we could mess this up. And somehow Lakewood continues to say, well, here, hold my beer because we continue to mess it up. How are we going to build a houseless community on a marshland? How are we going to try and push the houseless community out into the middle of nowhere? And just hope it works out? We're going to help them grow food in a wetland? Where, and there's going to be security. I hope that they can handle bears. What are we doing? I don't know if this is the city council or if people are just bringing you these harebrained schemes, but they continue to be entertained. And maybe that's the most frustrating part. With the trees, we told you what was going to happen and then you cut one down and made a pen out of it after you said that it was the city tree. So that's cool. What happens next with the houseless community? We're going to put them in the swamps and hope for the best. And that's the best Lakewood could do? We'll put together something. We'll come in two weeks. I'll present it myself if you'd like. Maybe you'll start to listen to the people because I don't know if you noticed, but a lot of the same people that were saying, hey, don't cut down these trees, or, hey, maybe we should actually save the library. And now people saying, hey, maybe we shouldn't send the houseless community out to the swamps. They're all talking about what's best for the people. And it makes me wonder why you aren't. Once again, I don't know if this was your idea, but it's a bad one. Justice for Said Joakim and all power to the people.
Next, Dosarius Farmacus. Let's hold our applause till the end. Might be nice and courteous for all speakers.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Dosarius Farmacus. I'm the Minister of Education of the Panther Party. And I want to start, and I just kind of want to explain this because I guess this is a confusing concept to some people. But when we talk about a social safety net, we're not talking about an actual physical net that you physically grab people and trap them in. I'm not sure if people understand that. It's kind of like a metaphor, you know? So when we talk about a camp for houseless people where they will be, and this is in the plan, right? You can go read it. There are surveillance systems, there are fences, there are security personnel who will constantly engage with the residents. This is, again, this is in the plan. These are the words they use. And furthermore, the people who are, you know, living in these camps, living in these 10-foot by 20-foot homes, that's when they talk about a miniature home, they're talking about a 10-by-20-foot space that somebody's living in. And that's, I mean, that's, it's my bathroom. But there isn't a bathroom, of course. You know, they'll have to use a communal bathroom. Anyway. And then they're going to farm the land, the wetland. And then they're going to farm the land, the wetland, I guess. I don't know how you do that. I guess you get rid of it. Um, but they're going to farm the wetland. They're going to, uh, and then they're expected to, to, they're expected to farm it and sell, uh, the produce in order to pay their rent now. Just to clarify, um, when you have somebody, when, when, when the state says to somebody, here, we're going to give you this place to stay and this land to work. And you can farm that land and then you can use the fruits of your labor to pay us. That's, that's called a peasant. When you treat someone that way, when you give them that option, that's, that's, you're making them into a peasant. I mean, that's literally what that is. And then on top of that, if you want, you can also be a tour guide because, because this isn't just, you know, we aren't just creating, recreating feudalism because that's, that's where we're at now, right? But, but this is also, you know, a zoo. People can come and I don't know, pay, pay to see the, I, what, what is this? And people are gonna, you know, stand here and act like it's, it's progressive. You're gonna stand here and act like you're taking care of these people, you know? There doesn't need to be a homeless problem at all. Everybody can live in an actual home. If we didn't live in a profit driven society that doesn't care about anything besides making money for corporations, this wouldn't be a problem at all. They don't have a problem with homelessness in Cuba. Which is a, a tiny island that's been under embargo for six decades. Justice for Said Joaquin, all power to the people. Stop, stop screwing over the poor. This is insane.
That is the last individual who has raised their hand to address counsel during this public comment period. Are there any other individuals who wish to address counsel? Don't clap. Who wish to address the council during the public comment period? Please raise your hand. Seeing none, I'm going to make a couple of comments before I close public comment. First, on the Pierce County Village. It is not a Lakewood program. We have not promulgated the concept. It is one that has been put out by the county executive and is under consideration by the Pierce County Council. Lakewood has, as part of its ARPA fund, recommended a conditional contribution of a million dollars toward that. We'll talk more about it tonight as we get to the, the action items. But it's conditional because of concerns expressed by the council about infrastructure, zoning, et cetera. But it is not a Lakewood project. So I would encourage those folks who are commenting to listen to the study sessions and the other packet agenda information so they have the facts before they speak. On the library issue, in terms of the deannexation analysis, there was a significant study session last week. I don't know if the commenters received the, the packet. But there was significant financial analysis provided to the council that discussed the issue on the deannexation analysis. On the gravelly comments, I think staff is, is working with you, Ms. Hutchins, and is digging into some of the details that may make the conversation more fruitful. Uh, it is not a fait accompli by any means. It's just there's some additional information that is necessary. I do see one more who's raised their hand, Lysentia Immortalis.
Hi, um, this is Lysentia Immortalis and I'm the chief of staff of the Panther Party. I did read the plan on the swamp that you're sending the houseless folks out to, and I realize you want to put, you know, it off onto other boards and other whatever, and that you guys are just contributing, entertaining the thought, but you did provide a plan. And it does say, I mean, that you are going to have these people live in the middle of a swamp. You know, you're going to have to drain it to even farm on it. And then, I mean, either they're going to go out in the middle of the night and get eaten by bears if they use the porta potty? Like, I don't even understand. Like, the, the other thing is, is that there's one road out there. It's almost like you've made Alcatraz, but instead, you know, in a swamp outside the city. I mean, you're going to be keeping people there. So with fences, I mean, it's absurd. And, um, basically, you're going to have them work, which is almost like a form, you know, of enslaving somebody to sell something for their rent. So you're going to have them farming. I mean, I don't know if that's taking us way back to like the seventeen hundreds. I'm not even sure what that is, but this is completely dehumanizing. There will be no services available. Are you guys going to be driving them back and forth? Like, how are they going to clean their water or their laundry? Are they going to wash it in the swamp? I mean, I'm not sure. I mean, how will they see doctors? Are you going to have like, you know, vans driving back and forth to take them to appointments? Or are you just gonna be like, hey, you're on your own in the swamp with tons of mosquitoes? Hopefully you won't have like a, um, you know, a, an outbreak of some viral infection. I mean, this is crazy. Um, you know, Spokane has a system where they actually have like a camp there where the city actually provides everything for them, even warming shelters and, you know, cooling shelters, and they have bathrooms, they have, uh, food, they bring all the supplies in, they bring in garbage, uh, dumpsters and actually take them and, and, and the camp is clean because they actually have garbage dumpster, dumpsters there. I mean, that is much more, I mean, decent than putting, sending a whole group of people out to a swamp where there are no resources at all. So maybe you should look at some other plans that people are doing. Even Tacoma right now has a better option where they have actually put tents up that will actually hold up through the winter in a parking lot. And they have, they have bathrooms there and, and other resources. I mean, even Tacoma is doing something better. Think about other options because this is just crazy. Thank you. All power to the people. Justice for Said Joaquin.
Thankfully, that is the last hand that's been raised to address the counselor in the public comment period. Those that are addressing the issue of the Pierce County Village, I encourage you to look at the successful example in Austin, Texas, from which this idea was formed, which has been a very successful community first village project down there. And the people down there don't believe that they're living in a swamp, from what I'm told, or that they're lacking resources. We're not thankful for the housing project and services that have been provided, but again, not our project. That concludes the public comment period tonight. We next move to the consent agenda.
A, approval of the minutes of the city council special meeting of November seventeenth, twenty twenty-two. B, approval of the minutes of the city council meeting of November twenty-first, twenty twenty-two. C, approval of claims vouchers in the amount of two million eight hundred and forty-four thousand one hundred and ninety dollars and eleven cents for the period of October fifteenth, twenty twenty-two through November twenty-second, twenty twenty-two. D, approval of payroll checks in the amount of two million seven hundred and sixty-two thousand forty-two dollars and nineteen cents for the period of October sixteenth, twenty twenty-two through November fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. E, motion number twenty twenty-two dash ninety-six, authorizing the execution of an agreement with Active Construction, Inc. for the Spring Brook Park Phase Two Improvement Project. F, motion number twenty twenty-two dash ninety-seven, confirming my Mark Scheidmeyer as the Lakewood Hearings Examiner and also confirming the hearing examiner procedures for the conduct of hearings. G, motion number twenty twenty-two dash ninety-eight, authorizing the execution of agreements with Rebound Ready LLC to provide orthopedic injury treatment management for city employees through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. H, motion number twenty twenty-two dash ninety-nine, authorizing the expenditure of one million two hundred and fifty thousand of American Rescue Plan Act funds in support of Nourish Pierce County's purchase and renovation of a new building at a new Lakewood location. I, motion number twenty twenty-two dash one hundred, authorizing the conditional expenditure of one million dollars of American Rescue Plan Act funds in support of Pierce County Village for chronically homeless. J, motion number twenty twenty-two dash one oh one, authorizing the expenditure of seven hundred and fifty thousand of American Rescue Plan Act funds in support of the emergency food networks, construction of a new food storage warehouse. K, motion number twenty twenty-two dash one oh two, reappointing Lori Moss and Edith Owen Wallace to serve on the Community Services Advisory Board through December fifteenth, twenty twenty-six. L, motion number twenty twenty-two dash one oh three, canceling the Monday, December nineteenth, twenty twenty-two city council regular meeting and the Monday, December twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two study session. M, resolution number twenty twenty-two dash seventeen, authorizing the formation and establishing a sister city relationship with City of Gimhee, the Republic of Korea. N, items filed in the office of the city clerk. One, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board meeting minutes of September twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two. Two, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board meeting minutes of October twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two.
Thank you. Is there any item on the consent agenda which any council member wishes to remove at this time?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to remove, um, item I, motion twenty twenty-two dash one hundred.
Very good. Any other items any council member wishes to remove from the consent agenda at this time? If not, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented minus item I?
So moved.
It's been moved by council member Bell, seconded by council member Farmer, that we approve and adopt the consent agenda as presented minus item I. Any further discussion? All those in favor, sign by, by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We now turn to, uh, the consent agenda has been adopted minus item I. We now move to motion twenty twenty-two dash one hundred, which is item I. Madam Clerk.
Motion number twenty twenty-two dash one hundred, authorizing the conditional expenditure of one million dollars of American Rescue Plan Act funds in support of the Pierce County Village for chronically homeless.
Very good. Before we have discussion on this, we need to have a motion to approve or not item I.
So moved, Mr. Mayor, to approve.
It's been moved by council member Farmer, seconded by council member Branstad, that we adopt motion number twenty twenty-two dash one hundred. And for this, I will turn to council member Farmer for comment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I, I had a whole script written out and, um, I'm going to abandon that. So I apologize if I, if I, if I jump around. I, I am in favor of this proposal and I plan on voting for it. I, I am dismayed. I've heard a lot of misinformation tonight and I encourage folks to go back and not only read the plan as presented by, by Pierce County, but listen to the conversation that this council has had and many conversations. And this isn't the first time that we have, have talked and about and considered this proposal. And so I, I want you to know that we share many of your concerns, particularly about the environmental aspects of this proposal. And I, first I want to say that this, this could be an amazing regional partnership that if realized will serve Lakewood residents in addition to others from Pierce County. But I really wanted to point out and to clarify that our allocation of this million dollars is conditional. First, it is conditional on the parcel being connected to sewers. Period. End of story. That is the only environmentally responsible path forward. Second, that the proper zoning be determined and applied. There are, uh, any number of things that need to happen before this proposal, this project can move forward. These are very early days. Um, but I have confidence that we will, uh, all be working together in a regional manner to, to address these issues. There's probably going to be a full EIS, Environmental Impact Statement, and there will be many things that will be addressed at that point in time. Clearly, a whole bunch of, that's a technical term, a whole bunch of infrastructure needs to be put into place in order for this project to come to fruition. Again, these are early days and this is something that, uh, I propose, uh, I support, and I just wanted to open that up for discussion.
Thank you very much. Are there any other comments? Council member Branstad.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, that, uh, I, I would also second council member Farmer's remarks. First of all, that I'm in favor of this and having looked at it closely and had discussions with us and with others about it. I think that the proposal is based on a sound, successful model that is taking place in, and while the largest one is in Austin, Texas, there are others around the, even around, within the state of Washington where assembling villages of this type uh, have, have really done a good job of helping the chronically homeless on their own timelines move forward, but, but be also being able to exist with some, some dignity and actually form their own communities instead of being an, an isolated individual on a, on a city street. That, um, and I would again emphasize the fact that our discussions indicated many of the concerns that folks have alluded to. Um, and that even you, Mr. Mayor, have in correspondence with Pierce County have indicated that our support of this project is, is conditional on it. I think maybe it's unfortunate in our wording of the agenda bill today, where the agenda bill implied that the only condition was that Pierce County come up with the rest of the money. And that, that is not the limit of the conditions that we placed when we were discussing putting it forward, but that we are making the pledge of the dollars now so that, uh, the, the, the program maintains some momentum. In fact, the, one of the conditions that we didn't have was it doesn't necessarily have to be in the originally proposed location. It's the model somewhere within Pierce County, uh, run doing that. And I am very encouraged by the fact that the rescue mission is the agency that would be operating in, 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 in being in direct contact with residents of, of this area. They have an exceptional reputation at multiple locations. And they are not an organization that will send homeless people out into the wilderness and abandon them. Um, they, uh, you know, they, they, they are an organization that has a history of success, but more than that, has a history of compassion. And, 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 and of being able to connect with the population that we really want to serve, both the chronically homeless here in Lakewood, but also regionally throughout, throughout the county. So, um, you know, I, I think that there are more conditions than just come up with more money. And, and that our conditions are, are, are primarily founded in two two themes. One, a theme of that it is constructed and has the infrastructure to make it a viable, dignified place for people to reside. And two, that it is something that is going to not negatively impact the environment, okay, but that the infrastructure necessary to make that true is included in it. And I think that, uh, some of the feedback that we've gotten when we have communicated that to Pierce County has been that they, they have heard us and that they are actually moving in those directions to make sure that the, the project is not going to house a single person until those sorts of things are taken care of. But pledging the money is important because we are the second largest city in Pierce County and it's in, you know, and, and it's, it's, it's important that we play regionally as we have always, uh, thought is our role as, as, as a city. And so I'm going to be in support of making the conditional pledge of these dollars.
Thank you, council member Branstad. Are any other comments by members of the council? I too want to echo the, the comments. Thank you. Very well stated, both of you for that. And I, I hope the commenting public, uh, hears that, that are not present tonight or perhaps is present on Zoom. Because it's important to have context for the decisions we make as opposed to just pulling something, uh, out of what you want to believe or hear, because all of us have opinions. Um, but we all have to operate from the same set of facts. So we are trying to be a regional, uh, partner in the chronic issue of homelessness in our community. This is a project that we have been briefed on, uh, many times that is based on a very successful model in Texas. And for the reasons stated tonight, our And for the reasons stated tonight, our monies are conditional on certain things happening. And, uh, with that, we're going to now vote on this particular action item. So in the absence of further discussions, all those in favor of motion twenty-twenty-two dash one hundred, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion twenty-twenty-two dash one hundred has been adopted. We now turn to the regular agenda. Public hearings and appeals. Madam Clerk.
This is the date set for a public hearing to vacate that portion of one hundred and thirteenth Street Southwest, lying west of the westerly margin of Kendrick Street.
Thank you. For this, uh, we will call on our Public Works Engineering Director, Mr. Paul Bucic.
Good evening, Mayor. Members of City Council. In your packet tonight is a memo from Public Works Engineering recommending that the public hearing tonight be canceled. Uh, late in the game, we discovered that there was an error on behalf of the applicant. They had only petitioned to vacate forty-six hundred square feet and they came back with a new, um, survey that showed that they were actually trying to petition for over fourteen thousand square feet. They missed part of the road. Um, they discovered that when they did their survey and the surveyor said, oh, by the way, there was a court case that took this additional portion and made it right away. I have spoken to the agent, explained to him that this is unrecoverable error on their behalf, that they will need to start over. He commented was, yeah, I kind of wondered about that when we submitted that information. So I kind of felt like they knew it. They were hoping to get through it. Um, they will start over. And we'll be back before you in the first part of next year with a new request for a street vacation done properly.
Very good, Mr. Bucic. Then, I guess, makes very clear sense as to why we're not going to be having a public hearing, assuming the council votes to cancel it. So in this time, do I have a motion to cancel the public hearing that's set for tonight? Uh, the hearing being that to vacate that portion of one hundred and thirteen Street Southwest, lying west of the westerly margin of Kendrick Street. Is there a motion to cancel the public hearing?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
It's been moved by Deputy Mayor Moss, seconded by Councilmember Farmer, that we formally cancel the public hearing originally set for tonight, and I am assuming by the city attorney standing there that this is the appropriate action.
Mayor Whalen, members of the council, it is up to the legal department to occasionally frustrate everyone with what feels like a pointless process. This is not pointless process. You have told the public that this is the date of the public hearing. And because it has been set by act of the council, it must be either postponed or canceled or held by the council. And as, um, the Public Works Department has pointed out, we have not really properly notified the public of the proper legal description.
Correct.
And rather than hold the whole hearing over the incorrect legal description, it does need to be properly handled. So process is what we do at legal and you are following the proper process. Thank you.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of canceling the public hearing tonight, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The hearing has been canceled. Thank you, Mr. Bucic. Thank you, Ms. Walker, for helping us with the, uh, the challenging procedural item here. Next, we turn to resolutions. Resolution twenty-twenty-two dash fifteen, Madam Clerk.
Resolution number twenty-twenty-two dash fifteen, approving the twenty-twenty-three comprehensive plan and zoning map amendment docket.
Very good. For this, I'll call on our Planning Manager, Tiffany Spear, who will join us virtually to give us an overview.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Tiffany Spear, and thank you for, um, allowing this virtual presentation this evening. So as was just mentioned by both you and the city clerk, we are talking tonight about action on the twenty-twenty-three comprehensive plan amendment docket. On November twenty-first, the council held a public hearing on the nine proposed amendments for inclusion in the docket. So this is not a substantive review or adoption of any of these amendments. This is setting the list that will be reviewed in, uh, early twenty-twenty-three and into the spring by the staff and then by Planning Commission and then back to council for action next year. So just briefly to go through the nine amendments, the first is to add the tree canopy goal that came out of the tree preservation and tree code discussions this year. The second is one that, uh, the council, if you're ready to take action tonight, will need to clarify in the resolution that's proposed at page one thirty-nine of your packet, resolution twenty-twenty-two one fifteen. Option A of this one is one set of co, uh, one set of parcels rezoned and option B would add an additional set. And if you'll recall, this is the application regarding rezoning property immediately to the south of the downtown sub area. We've talked about this on November twenty-first at length. And what we found after Councilmember Anderson asked a question was that we needed to clarify and change the recommendation actually on the parcels that are currently zoned residential along Wild Air. And, and this department is now saying that we do not recommend including them. However, if the council would like to proceed with that option, option B would zone all of these parcels that you'll see here from R four into, uh, Central Business District. And what that would do is actually create a prohibited use. So they would become non-conforming, which is not what council was told and it was not what the Planning Commission was told, uh, several months ago. So what we are suggesting is that, or recommending is that as this council decides to take action on resolution twenty-twenty-two one fifteen, that you would recommend taking option B and what that would do is remove these R four zoned parcels out of the recommendation. And it would only be the original three parcels that were requested to be rezoned, um, originally by the private applicant back this summer. And then immediately south of those are some MF-one parcels. These are, um, they would not be non-conforming if this, uh, rezone were to occur. And they are already included within this bright turquoise line, which is the current residential target area for the downtown. So what the department is recommending is option B, and once more, that would be the three private applicant requested parcels coupled with the MF-one multifamily one parcels immediately to the south. The third application is for, uh, rezoning three parcels owned by the racket club back to what they were several years ago in order for the club to be able to move ahead with, uh, use of those parcels now for tennis courts. The fourth is rezoning parcels related to the Lhasa, um, Grouley Lake Commons Project. The fifth is to allow permanent supportive housing and transitional housing within the commercial one, two, and three zones. The sixth is to allowing, uh, funding for relocation assistance as provided by state law now. The seventh is a reason of a parcel for the expansion of Wordslake Park. The eighth is to update the comprehensive plan maps and texts to reflect the adoption of the master plan for the Western State Hospital. And the ninth is to amend policy LU two point two five to remove the requirement of a property owner to live in, uh, the primary residence or an accessory dwelling unit on that property. And so I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much. Any questions of Ms. Spear? Mr. Branstadter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Spear, I, I have some questions regarding the, uh, option A, option B for the, the areas that were being looked to add uh, into the central business district. And I very clearly understand not including that neither the option A or B includes adding the parcels currently with R zoning. That the original request that started this, that was initiated, not as a city request, but by a, a, a private entity was to rezone the three parcels.
Correct.
That they, then they're adjacent to those are some parcels zoned MF-one. And so is there, is there an option that you're recommending? Is the choice between only doing the three initial parcels as was requested by the private entity? Is there an option to do just those three?
Uh, not the way the resolution is currently drafted. What we did was remove, let me start over. Option B would include everything that was part of the discussion on November twenty-first, including the residential, those R four, uh, parcels along Wild Air. Option B removes the R four, but it keeps the MF-one, which are three parcels or four parcels, uh, immediately to the south of those requested by the private applicant, because the Planning Commission did recommend those to you. If the council wanted to do nothing but the three parcels originally requested by private applicant, um, I think if you were to make that as an oral amendment tonight, we could correct the resolution for signature once council takes action.
Okay. The three original parcels that were requested by the applicant, he was the owner of all three of those parcels. Is that correct?
I believe he is the owner of at least one. I don't know if he's the owner of all three.
Okay, but he has an interest in developing all three?
Yes.
Okay. The four, the additional four MF-one parcels, did the Planning Commission or staff have any input or conversations with the owners of those parcels?
No, this has all been discussed at, um, the Planning Commission and the council, uh, level without any public outreach per se, other than the standard, uh, public notifications for public hearings. If these were to be included once council takes action on this proposal tonight or at a future date, we would then start the outreach to specific parcel property owners.
So these property owners didn't get a notice of either the Planning Commission's public hearing or the city council's public hearing?
Correct. Not an individualized one. They just would have received, if they noticed it, the citywide notification.
Okay, and so if I wanted to propose that we limit this year's, the twenty-twenty-three docket to the three parcels originally requested, then I'm asking, then would I need to move to adopt option B minus the MF-one parcels?
Let me share my screen just for ease of reference here. If you were to do, sorry, I want to go up. If you were to say only the, the three parcels requested by the original, um, property owner, that would be oh, excuse me, removing the second bullet from option A. So you would say you want to, um, adopt it with option A, only the first bullet, and then you would be referring to the correct parcels.
Okay, and then just with respect to the MF-one parcels, did I understand that, um, they already are in an RTA?
Yes, they are included in the current residential target area for the downtown.
Right, thank you.
Any further questions? Mr. Bokey.
Thank you, Ms. Spear. I just wanted to ask a question because we kind of went through it quickly a couple of weeks ago about the ADU change. What, what is the most common practice in cities?
It's actually, uh, to allow the, both the primary residents and the ADU to not be, or not required that they be occupied one or the other by the primary owner. And the city's current municipal code actually already states this. So our, um, change here is bringing our comp plan in keeping with our municipal code.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? So I, I have a question just to clarify. What, what's the, the downside of option B, if anything?
The downside to option B is that you would then be creating non-conforming uses all along Wild Air. That was an error when, um, we presented this information to council and it wasn't discussed at Planning Commission. So we're trying to catch it now rather than later down the road. Um, but what this would result in, because I, eighteen B, that the code for the downtown plan specifically says, um, that single-family detached residential uses are prohibited in the downtown.
Got it.
That, that is the, the reason for the removal.
Okay, so we're fine with the MF-one subject to council's approval, MF-one and MF-three, which is option A.
Correct.
That's consistent with the RTA and the Central Business District Subarea Plan.
Correct.
Okay. Any further questions, comments, before we consider resolution twenty-twenty-two dash fifteen? I have to have a motion to approve?
I would move to approve resolution twenty-twenty-two dash fifteen, um, in incorporating option A for amendment twenty-twenty-three dash O two.
It's been moved by Councilmember Branstadter and seconded by Councilmember Bokey that we approve resolution twenty-twenty-two dash fifteen, option A. Is that accurate? I wasn't sure I caught the last sentence of your contingent.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, it's option A. Everyone clear? Questions, Councilmember Farmer?
I, I, maybe a misunderstanding, but I thought there needed to be an amendment if we chose option A.
So we have to first move twenty-twenty-two dash fifteen to state that option A would be the amended motion subject to adoption. So can I take your, your motion as a friendly amendment, Mr. Branstadter, to amend resolution twenty-twenty-two dash fifteen for consideration of option A?
Uh, I, I guess my consideration was based on the request for action is that a motion needed to include either option A or B for, for the initial consideration.
Sounds like that.
And so I moved to include, do that, including option A. And then it can be adjusted from there, whether we wanted to change, uh, change things within option A or do something else on toward.
I, I think we can accomplish that with the motion on the table rather than amending twenty-twenty-two dash fifteen to consider it as inclusive of option A, if that makes sense, Ms. City Attorney.
I, I just heard somebody say that they are now completely confused. And the purpose of the process is that someone looking at Slater understands what the council did and why they did it. So it, it's up to you if, if some of you are already saying you're confused and I would suspect you're not getting there.
Do I have a motion to amend resolution twenty-twenty-two dash fifteen by the consideration and inclusion of either option A or option B?
I try. I'll look at Ms. Spear. I wish to amend resolution number twenty-two fifteen, um, specifically for item twenty-twenty-three dash zero one. No, that's not what I want.
Zero two.
Twenty-twenty-three zero two. And I would like to, uh, choose option B and strike option A.
Isn't that the reverse of what we want?
I, I
B? Is it B? Maybe we are all confused. I thought A was MF-three and MF-one.
Well, a part of the issue is that we are attempting to vote on two things at once. So the proper procedure for doing this, you have an ordinance before you. You move to approve the ordinance, which frankly doesn't totally make sense because it's approving A and B. You make the motion. The motion is on the floor and then someone must move to amend. A simple amendment would be for someone to move to amend either A or B out of it. And then you discuss whether or not that option should be out of it. If you're disagreeing on whether it be A or B, then you may go a few rounds, uh, choosing your option.
Okay, no, I'm getting confused.
If I could, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, why don't you clarify and then we'll get this.
Thank you, and my apologies. This was, um, an attempt that obviously didn't accomplish what it was hoping to accomplish. Um, page, uh, one forty-three of your packet, you'll see the language in the actual resolution. Option A would include the R four. Option A would include the R four, option B does not. So if you go with what the city attorney just suggested, there's a motion to a, a, adopt resolution, and then there would be a motion to amend that by removing either A or B. The recommendation from the department is that you would remove A and keep B.
Got it, got it, got it. Okay, thank you for clarifying because it is a bit obtuse. Okay, so, Mr. Branstadter, you want to try it again? We've got the motion on the floor to adopt resolution twenty twenty-two dash fifteen. It's been moved and seconded. Do you want to make an amendment to that motion? To strike option A is what I'm looking for.
To be honest, I don't understand what amendment I would make to try to get to the point of where she made it. I, I, I guess, you know, I defer to Mr. Bokey. If he wants to recommend that we consider a basic resolution with option B in it, then I can work with what's in option B.
Okay, I'm, but I'm working, but I got to strike option A first. Okay. So.
Bring it on.
I wish to, on I don't know what we call it, twenty twenty-three zero two, proposal twenty twenty-three zero two, to strike option A.
From the, if that's clear enough, do I have a second? Okay, it's been moved by council member Bokey and seconded by council member Bell. Then in the consideration of resolution twenty twenty-two dash fifteen, we drop option A from the Conference of Plan Proposal twenty twenty-three dash zero two.
And the reason for that is those items added by the planning commission would, they would become non-conforming parcels. And I just don't think that that's something we want to do right now and with that neighborhood.
Any other comments or questions? Everybody understand what we're voting for? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So option A has been stricken.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Bokey.
I'd like to propose that in proposal number twenty twenty-three dash zero two that we insert option B as shown on page one forty. Like, I don't have to show that. Option B as shown.
Second.
Been moved by council member Bokey, seconded by council member Farmer that twenty twenty-three dash zero two as a planned amendment would include option B. Any further discussion? Mr. Branstadter.
I'm going to support moving it forward onto the docket with option B. I have mixed feelings about option B. I think that, you know, it, it, it's an odd situation of where the planning commission took an individual private request and then morphed it into something that's a combination of a private request and a planning commission request. That, that does seem odd. However, on the positive side, the four parcels that are being added to the original request are already in a residential target area. And the residential target area was originally designed to actually be for the central business district. So I'm okay with that, you know, while I am not thrilled that there have been no interaction with the owners of the parcels that the planning commission added, that this is just being placed on a docket. And that there's another set of hearings and, and there will be an opportunity for the owners of those four parcels to have their input to do that and be reached out to as the process moves forward over the next six months. So I'm gonna, gonna vote to approve the docket, including option B in its entirety.
Very good. Any further discussion? I believe the motion is on the table. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? That has been adopted. I think we now move to the main motion, which is resolution twenty twenty-two dash fifteen as amended by excluding option A from the proposed conference and plan amendment twenty twenty-three dash zero two and including option B. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of hopefully the understandable resolution on the table signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Ms. Spear, you've got a docket.
Thank you very much.
We now turn to resolution twenty twenty-two dash sixteen. Madam Clerk.
Resolution number twenty twenty-two dash sixteen, authorizing the issuance of conditional certificate of acceptance of tax exemption within a residential target area. Jerkirk Cove, Constantine.
Very good, thank you. And I was looking for Ms. Newton, who I understand will appear virtually to give us an overview.
Becky, if you could please unmute, unmute yourself.
Okay, there we go. Good evening, Mayor Whalen, Deputy Mayor Moss, and members of council. And thank you for the opportunity to present online as well this evening. This is the Bristol Multi-Family Tax Exemption Resolution twenty twenty-two sixteen. And your packet this evening includes the resolution as law, as well as the conditional certificate and the agreement regarding the residential target area or RTA. The visual map of the project area and the plat map. Staff is recommending this evening that city councils sign the resolution and authorize a city manager to sign both the conditional certificate and the agreement for the MFTE. As you know, this project is our first MFTE mixed-use project in the downtown area. The project is located within the CBD RTA. It consists of seven residential units as well as a commercial office unit. And it also includes twenty percent minimum affordable units in order to qualify for the twelve-year exemption. We also have this evening our planner for this project, Andrea Bell. Should you have any specific questions regarding the project? Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Any questions of Ms. Newton before we turn for motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-two dash sixteen? Do I have a motion? Yes.
He did all the fun stuff. So moved, Mr. Mayor.
It's been moved by council member Farmer, seconded by council member Bell that we adopt resolution twenty twenty-two dash sixteen. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Resolution twenty twenty-two dash sixteen has been adopted. We now move to unfinished business. Do we have anything, Mr. City Manager?
There's none, Mayor.
Great, we'll move to new business. Motion twenty twenty-two dash one zero four, Madam Clerk.
Motion number twenty twenty-two dash one oh four, approving the twenty twenty-three human services funding recommendations.
Thank you very much. For this, we'll have an overview by our human service coordinator, Shannon Bennett.
Good evening, Mayor Whalen and council members. My name is Shannon Bennett. I am the human services coordinator for here at the city of Lakewood. And tonight, we are asking council to approve one of two options for our twenty twenty-three, twenty-four human service funding, as well as to give the city manager authority to sign all of the agreements that will coincide with our funding recommendations. So in your packet, you were all provided with the applications that our community services advisory board received, reviewed, and rating, rated, as well as a, just a little cheat sheet of those recommendations we're making tonight, along with the summaries of what the service providers, their programs that they are asking us to fund. It must be said that all applications that we received were reviewed and rated on a scale. And they were being, they were considered equally. Following the November fourteenth study session, it was discovered by staff that one of our existing funded agencies, Making a Difference Foundation, had in fact submitted an application by the deadline, and it was a qualified application. It was assumed they had not responded to our application request, but in fact, research showed that they had in fact met the deadline and their application did meet all requirements. And as a result, we had a special meeting, the Community Services Advisory Board did a special meeting and that was on the twenty-first. The board members reviewed and again rated the application. They received, they being Making a Difference Foundation, received a score that put them in the second tier of funding. So to, like I said, I'm sorry. We then, after, we, we looked at a number of Porsche, opportunities or, excuse me, options regarding how we would proceed. We went from no action, which was just to forward the list that we had already presented to everyone without the discovered application. We chose, you know, we looked at inserting into current list based on score and see how it changes the overall outcome. It would change the point system for each tier and possibly drop the lower scored applications into no fund category. A third option we looked at was to insert into the current list based on score and suggest potential reductions to the tier level they were in to see what the outcome would be with a plan to still currently fund all the original recommended programs and the new one. Another option we looked at was to reduce funding to all tiers and applicants. We also looked at, to relook at recommendations based on fund, funding strategy and support a specific dollar amount or percentage of total funds for each strategy based on the current applications or historic funding. And lastly, we looked at first council suggestion maybe to request additional resources to support this additional program. CSAB, you noted, we voted, or they voted unanimously, I did not participate, to recommend two options to a council which tonight represent, which is to count, option one is to add twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars to our human services budget each year to, to support, which will result in funding all applications that we originally recommended at the originally recommended funding amount, funding level based on its average score, and increase the one percent human services budget by twenty-two thousand five hundred. Option two is to reduce funding amount from twenty-two five to twenty thousand two hundred and fifty for those applications in the tier two, which would have them scoring between thirty-seven and forty-one points. And this will result in reducing funnel, funding level by two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars for the ten applications. However, of those ten applications, two of the applicants did not ask for the amount of twenty-two five. They asked for a lesser amount, so they'd be funded at full. And this concludes my presentation tonight. I am happy to field any questions council has.
Mr. Branstadter.
Yes, thank you. And, and, and I understand that the, essentially you're telling us the committee went through and did their complete set of work with a, a, a set of standards, came up with a funding schedule, and it was after the fact that this valid application was discovered and that it was an application from someone who had, was receiving funding in the current biennium and that the, the application was evaluated in isolation by the, the board and was determined that it, it was equivalent in value in terms of strength to a group of applications that were in tier two.
Correct.
But that to then readjust all the funding, there were a variety of ways to do that which impacted either between two and ten different agencies with their, with their requests, and we had already tentatively told all those agencies what the original recommendation of the council was.
If they had paid, if they had watched or, or, or appeared at our study session, yes. I had not given any word to any of our applicants.
But it was publicly published what the, what the recommendations were in, in, in the, in a study session agenda.
Correct.
Yeah. So I guess my only question is, is that we put ourselves, we're in the same situation as we were on the resolution that was earlier in the agenda of where the resolution and the agenda thing has two options and we have to go through some system to, to both move it and then amend it to include one of the two options or, as we did last time, not include one of the two options to be able to go and do that. And I'm so I'm clear what the two options are, okay, and I'm, and I, I understand the process that you, you went through and that it was and this committee goes to, goes through a lot of work, both to come up with the initial ones and then to reconsider all the different permutations of other options because of of an error. Okay, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? I, I have a question. You know, we've had a couple of back-to-back public comment sessions by well-meaning folks from Prince of Peace and certainly the Support the Enlisted Project. So for whatever reasons, they scored lesser than the mean or the average. And that's where the funding broke, right, down based on the points? Of course, council's not bound by that. If you want to do something other than the recommendation before us on either option one or two, you can certainly do that. I just point that out because it's always at our option to make the change. Mr. Bokey, did you have a question?
I, I do have a question. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Question, the, the one that was added, Making a Difference Foundation, you mentioned that they're they're also currently a recipient? And then when I read their explanation or their, what they do, their food banks, so we've got a number of food items in here, with delivery and mobile food bank service. If the client served almost half, received home delivery services due to health, transportation, and access barriers. How do they determine, how does this group find those people?
As I understand it from sitting down with the owner of, or the person who began, is it's word of mouth. A lot of word of mouth is how they, they get their business. So, and they're, in their food delivery, they've grown so much that they have, you may have noticed in their application, but they, they, they have a an agreement with DoorDash, who then also delivers food to individuals. And they, they provided a map to us and you can see all of the dots, most of the dots are those home delivery items, and they also operate two or three food trucks where individuals can go to them and get food from.
Okay, thank you. Any other question, Mr. Branstadter?
I will just say that I had a chance to look rather closely at how the Making a Difference Foundation operates their thing over there. And they don't put out an advertisement, say, sign up with us. They, they actually look for referrals, and they're particularly tied into the multifamily housing system of looking for particularly seniors that have, that, 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 whose housing is being paid for with vouchers, being able to go and do that, so that they're, they're, they're low-income folks. And they particularly found that those were also tended to be folks who don't really have transportation and who were, and particularly during COVID. And their, their spot map of the different places that they delivered to on a, on a regular basis of different residents were, were heavily on the east side of, in Lakewood, are heavily on the east side along the, along South Tacoma Way and in the area between South Tacoma Way and Lakewood Drive primarily. And so, and and also in Springbrook. And so, so particularly between Mata Vista and Springbrook, they, they were, they were covering a lot of low-income residents who were transportation challenged with getting food to them on a regular basis. So it, and, and it seemed to be a model that, my understanding was their data that they had reported in terms of their performance under their current contract was they were meeting all the goals that they had. And, and they are an organization that has lots of different arms, and, and they, and, and they, and they, so, so while this particular thing is a Tacoma Lakewood, Spanaway, Parkland focus for them. They have other programs that they deal with that are educational and other things that, that expand into much larger geographic area to be able to go and do that. So, but I think the bottom line is that they filled a void in Lakewood for a getting not meals delivered to people, but food delivered to people that might not be have the transportation to go to a traditional food bank to be able to do that, or even to go to a traditional drop-off spot for a, a mobile food bank. And so I, I unders, I take the evaluation from the committee that they found that it, that, that it fills a niche in, in our piece there, that if their proposal had been considered initially, when all of the proposals were being scored, it definitely would have scored in a, in, in, within, within a range of being funded. And so, but at, at this point in time, we were really down to the two options of either we squeeze them in to try to stick to the original budget allocation that was given to the committee, or we add the twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars to, 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 to add them on for this coming biennium. But I don't have any concerns at all about the, the validity and the worth whileness of the organization and its, and its work.
Any further questions or comments? Yes, Councilmember Bell.
Thank you, Mayor. So I was listening to you when you said we do not need to stick to the scoring, because I think that the scoring is a little often, it skews a little bit at the end. And so I'm looking at specifically like Loaves and Fishes, Prince of Peace, and they are all very Lakewood-focused. Everything is Lakewood, Lakewood-centric. It's not regional. It is just here for the area. So that would be something that I would like to see despite the score, so it not be stuck within the scoring parameters of with the, because they have a, I don't know if we can, the thirty-two, so that puts them in a lower rank. So I would like to see maybe if that was something we could work with.
Would you have a recommendation on a I don't want to use the term fishes and loaves, but you know, taking some and adding to the other, because we have, we've got only so much to work with right now, even with the additional twenty-two. But it certainly is subject to a recommendation, I guess, on your point. My question is, what are we missing, if any, on the food side? Because that's a food provider. Are we missing an area of Lakewood, to your knowledge? Ms. Bennett, it might be filled by the Prince of Peace Lutheran Church program, Loaves and Fishes. I know we're doubling up on EFN, two different purposes supposedly. They got, you know, equal scores. Are we missing anything by not including Loaves and Fishes? Is that your, that's kind of your question, right?
Yeah. I mean, I, I don't know if I can get into the particulars as to how, why the Community Services Advisory Board felt that the application did not rise to the level of funding. I'm happy to do that now.
I'm not so much concerned about your interpretation of what their thinking was. I'm more asking about, from your knowledge, working with the social service agencies in the community, is that a gap that is present if they're not receiving funding, Loaves and Fishes through Prince of Peace?
No.
All right.
They are holiday, holiday, as, as, as the, as the program is presented, they are holiday gift baskets. So twice a year is what they're proposing. This money go to provide holiday food baskets twice a year. And other agencies, as I understand, do in fact provide that service.
Okay. That help with your question?
Yes. I just, my point was more or less that some of the other things that we had in there were more regionally focused, as whereas this was Lakewood-specific, which that was my, my point and my concern.
I mean, you can certainly, you can plug and pull if you wish. I mean, it's the council's option. Any other questions, folks? How about the, you know, we've heard a little bit about Support the Enlisted Project. They got the thirty-two point score. They're addressing housing and homelessness. Certainly, we have some money in that category with other providers. And again, it's a question of whether you want to jump the recommendation of the committee that spent the time on this or not, or tweak it at your, at your direction. Well, how about a motion to approve, motion twenty-two-two-dash-one-zero-four, either option one or two as presented? Then you can amend it, but we've got to get it on the table.
Hey, I, I, I will move to approve the, the resolution with option one as presented.
I'll second that. It's been moved by Councilmember Branstadter, second of my Councilmember Bokey, that we adopt motion twenty-two-two-dash-one-zero-four with option one presented. Just so we're clear, option one has the lesser amount and doesn't include the addition for Make a Difference Foundation, correct?
Option one is to add an additional
Action one adds, adds it. Total money to the one percent.
There it is. Yeah, I see it on page one seventy-six. Sorry about that. It's in my aim to add confusion after ten hours of no food. Yeah. I'm about on my last gasp here. Any further discussion? Mr. Branstadter, have your mic on? No? Okay. You couldn't certainly make an amendment if you wish. You can say, I move to amend the motion on the table by X. If that's what you'd like to do.
I make a motion to move the amendment on the table to
To amend the motion on the table.
To amend the motion on the table to add. Correct, I would say that at the end. There's the three that have the gray on it, correct, that would be, or just the fish.
You can certainly do whatever you wish in your amendment.
I make a motion to amend it to add the Prince of Peace Lutheran Loaves and Fishes.
For what amount?
To increase it to the different tier, which would be in the tier, I believe, would be the tier two.
Okay, and so I'm looking to Ms. Bennett to tell us how we would accomplish that, because some monies have to come out of other buckets. So it can either be an equal taking, if you will, and spreading of the peanut butter, or you can say, Ms. Bell, that your motion to amend is for the sum of X to come from the following, boom, boom, and boom. Got it.
And we need that answer right now?
We do. That's part of the motion to amend.
Okay.
I mean, what you could do is you could add your motion to amend, I'm just speaking for you for a moment, you could say ten thousand dollars or five, and you could take it from EFN, and give EFN twenty grand in each category, and take that five and move it to Fishes and Loaves, for instance. Is that something you'd like to do?
That is something I would like to do. I would like to make a motion to move the ten thousand from EF, what did you?
Could you say five, twenty-five hundred each category?
From each category.
And move it to Prince of Peace Lutheran Church Loaves and Fishes program?
Yes.
In the amount of five thousand dollars?
Correct.
Is there a second to the amendment? Sure, the motion to amend, as I understand it, is to fund Prince of Peace Lutheran Church in the amount of five thousand dollars from the allocations to EFN, which would, which would reduce their allocations from twenty-two five on each of their two line items to a flat twenty thousand. That's where the five thousand comes from. Is that the motion?
That is the motion, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
So before I second, I just want to make sure, so it would go down to Prince of Peace Lutheran Church Loaves and Fishes, and it would read five thousand dollars. I'll second that.
Okay. It's been an amendment by Councilmember Bell and second of my Councilmember Bokey that we amend motion twenty-two-two-dash-one-zero-four as follows. Inserting an allocation of five thousand dollars for Prince of Peace Lutheran Church, balancing the monies available for the allocation by deducting twenty-five hundred each from the two EFN allocations, resulting in their allocations at twenty-five, twenty thousand each. Is there any further discussion on that item? Mr. Branstadter?
The motion essentially takes money from two high-scoring applications and puts it into a much lower-scoring application that, you know, in terms of looking at the work that the, that the committee that we entrust with, with, with evaluating these pieces over there. And I have to say that I read the Prince of Peace's application, particularly after they came and talked with us to do that. And they are really poorly written. They didn't describe very well. They talked about multiple partners, but didn't particularly, didn't particularly speak to it very well. And that has to do, perhaps, with them being an organization that hasn't written many requests before. But that was really what that application is what the committee had to evaluate, and it's what we have to do it. And if you read the application inside the packet, it's difficult, it's difficult to follow and really see how they do that, and it doesn't include the implied participation of multiple other partners, but that aren't really shown in the budget in the application as to how they participate. So, you know, I, I, I'm inclined to agree with the scoring of the, of the, of the, of the committee. Committee's made of people that have been looking at these things for a number of years. Every year, there's a few new ones that come in, and, and there are some that were previous recipients that, that don't score as well. But I'm reluctant to tinker with their scoring and promote something that scored so low that it wouldn't have been funded by taking money away from, quite honestly, some, an, an organization that had two, two, two programs that scored considerably higher.
I would be voting in opposition to the amendment.
Sure. Any other comments, questions? This is why we put things on the table to have good discussions, so we get the issue out in the open. It's fair, fair to do it. So without further discussion, all those in favor of the amendment to the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed?
Nay.
Sounds like three to two. The nays have it. So we now go back to the motion on the table, twenty-two-two-dash-one-zero-four. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion twenty-two-two-dash-one-zero the amendment failed. It was three-two. I didn't vote.
So
So an abstention would be a no.
Can, can we roll call it, just so that we have that?
Certainly can, yeah.
Deputy Mayor Moss?
Nay.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Bokey?
Aye.
Councilmember Branstadter?
Nay.
Councilmember Farmer?
Nay.
And Mayor Whelan?
If I said aye, it's three to three, and it fails anyway, correct? Okay, amendment fails. We're now back to the motion twenty-two-two-dash-one-zero-four as presented. Any further discussion? And that's option one. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion twenty-two-two-dash-one-zero-four has been adopted as presented with option one. Thank you, Ms. Bennett. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, that concludes the unfinished business and new business. We now return the floor to our city manager for reports.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Just a few updates for you tonight. The first is, I wanted to let you know, I had a conversation with the president of the Historic Fort Sillicum Association last week as a follow-up to our meeting with DSHS earlier in November, where DSHS is going to run up their flagpole the city's proposal for the ownership of the historic buildings on Historic Fort Sillicum, as well as the underlying land come to the city of, of Lakewood. There's a lot of work to do there. But one of the items was to, you know, check with the Historic Fort Sillicum Association, given that they have a lease agreement with DSHS. Long story short, the message back from the association is that they are supportive of this, and I appreciate the work that the city and DSH is doing. So the next steps include, you know, really on the city's part, is to develop a program proposal on how that would work, and then DSHS, again, is flying it up their flagpole to see what kind of interest is. Again, is flying it up their flagpole to see what kind of interest is, um, all the way up through to the secretary. As well as identifying what the cost would be for that transition to, to occur. So. Just wanted to pass that on since that's an item in your legislative policy manual. It's unlikely that this would be something that would occur as part of this legislative session. One never knows, but. Uh, probably more likely, um, next, next session, um, the, the, the short session in twenty-twenty-four. Um, I also had a conversation with the executive director, director of the Pierce County Library System, um, regarding the, um. The, uh, the log that's in the current Lakewood, uh, main library. And, you know, long story short. Uh, you know, depending upon what they decide to do as it relates to that library, whether they're gonna renovate it or do whatever, um, that's to be determined on their part. Um, it is likely that, that, that log is gonna have to be moved. And, um, so the city, we're trying to help out, and so really on two fronts. The first is. Um, if they need a place to store it, we can certainly maybe make one of our barns available to be able to put it in there. And then secondly. Um, you know, the city's question to the library is, okay, do you plan on just having it sit in storage somewhere? Would you like to make it available for, you know, the public? And, uh, you know, the city's perspective is that it should be that ladder, and likewise, theirs is as well. So to accommodate this, given, um. They're not quite sure what their long-term plan is for a new library. Would be to, um, ask your arts commission to facilitate a process in twenty-twenty-three as part of their work plan to identify some options and alternatives of. Where to place the log. Of course, it would have to be in a place where it can be protected and preserved. Um, particularly if it's gonna be outdoors in some shape, form, or manner, for example, in a park or something. Um, but what I wanted to ask this body is, are you okay? With putting that on the Arts Commission's work plan for, um, their review and consideration? Of course, there'd probably be a. Lot of work that needs to occur to go into that, but, um, just wanted to. Run that up the proverbial flagpole with this body. I didn't want to get out ahead of you with your Arts Commission's work plan.
I think they can roll with it.
Yes.
Mr. Branstadter.
Uh, I, I am fine with that. I, I, I think that, um. But perhaps we should ask the library, rather than us storing it for them, will they just gift it to us? And then we'll decide what to do with it. Um, and, and let them focus at providing library services and let's, let, let, let us. Keep the heritage of the log and, 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 and put it someplace of where it'll survive. Without damage for a while, be able to go in it, because I wouldn't want to put the Arts Commission into creating a temporary home for it. And then the library coming up with a. Different place they want to put the log to do that. So. But I'd at least ask if they're willing to just. Gift it to the city.
Okay, if you, if you're gonna do that, might I suggest that, um, that they'd be responsible for moving it to wherever it needs to go on city property. That initial move, because it's gonna require some heavy equipment and a crane.
It's a conditional gift, I hear.
And then as far as moving it the second time to where it would be on some level of display, then the city would pick up that cost.
Right.
I don't want to get involved in trying to pull that log out of that building, quite frankly.
Right. Sounds like you have consensus for that, you know. Down the road, if it becomes our property, maybe we, like, we've chatted briefly, encase it in some poly resin.
Right.
Coating, so it preserves it, and it can be part of a park. Amenity. Yeah, it's too dry right now, so. Okay, thank you, Mr. Coffield. It sounds great.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, also, as a follow-up to last week's council meeting, um, as I understand, the council asked for some information. Regarding how ARPA funds could be used in support of city projects. Um, we've identified, you know, a number of capital investment projects, as well as a. Couple of programmatic uses, including partnering with the Lakewood Library. I'm sorry, the Lakewood Rotary Club, as well as the school district and the library on the Dolly Parton Imagination Library. Um, before we get too far along into, because there's a lot of work that would have to be done here on some of these project scopes. Um, if in fact, this is something that the council would, would like to do. Um, what I'd recommend is that, you know, sometime in January or February, we can bring back these projects. At a very high level in terms of project scope. Um, some of them probably wouldn't have a cost estimate. But have the council give us some more specific direction on which ones you'd like us to pursue further. So that we can kind of narrow it down, rather than, um, getting caught in the weeds and. You know, because just we did an internal brains. A brainstorming session, and we indicted, we identified quite a few, uh, capital projects particularly, but if that pleases the council. Um, that's something we can come back sometime, and again, first quarter of two thousand twenty-three, if not sooner.
That sounds great.
Um, also, on Friday, the Public Works Department learned that the city's application for sidewalks on the south side of Union Avenue in the Stillicum neighborhood. Was, uh, awarded our full ask of five hundred thousand dollars. It's a one point one million dollar project. Um, and so, um. Design is actually about thirty percent complete, so we'll complete design in twenty-three and twenty-four, and then construct in twenty-five. The monies aren't available till twenty-four, so. Um. So, uh, that's, that we'll have. Um, we also applied for a couple of other grants. They didn't make the cut. Um, however, I, in, in looking at the list, I'm not aware of any city that received funding in, in more than, supportive of more than one project, so. Um, want to congratulate our Public Works Engineering Department. Um, likewise, a project that the city's not taking a lead on, but is a partner in. Is the improvements on Lakewood Drive and Orchard Drive between fifty-six and seventy-four. The city of Tacoma is actually taking a lead on that project. I know I've reported out on that in the past. It's actually a partnership that would also include the university, City of University Place, since that, that roadway, uh, touches Lakewood, University Place, and Tacoma. And so Tacoma's in the process of doing some community outreach with, uh, a lot of the adjacent property owners in that area. And, uh, both University Place and Lakewood staff will be a part of that as well, but we just wanted to keep you appraised of that. Probably some future grant funding applications in the next couple of years or so. Um, also, we were approached by the Nisqually Indian Tribe. Um, what they would like to do is they would like to add a small segment of, uh, the city's roadway system along Pacific. Highway, Pacific Highway South between Bridgeport. The interchange, uh, at Bridgeport and I-5, and their, um, gas station in, in, in Mini Mart. And they want to add it to their National Register of, of, of roadways that are important to the tribe. Um, it is something that they have done elsewhere. They did it in the city of Tacoma, um, and, um, back in two thousand seventeen. Um, we did have some conversations with tribal representatives about this. And, um, we, um. Yeah, so, so we went through kind of a walkthrough, talk-through on that. Long story short, there's no downside to the city agreeing to this. It would be in the form of an MOU that we would bring back for your review and consideration to authorize me to sign it. Um, matter of fact, there could be a pretty significant upside in terms of, um, having the tribe involved as we look to seek funding. As it relates to, um, the Clover Creek floodplain area there, as it relates to, um, the I-5 corridor and things along those lines. So. Um, just wanted to give you a heads up that that's probably gonna be coming forward here in the next, in the next month or two. Um, also, um, you, you heard from Tiffany Spear, our Strategic and Long Range Planning Manager. Um, she is part of an advisory, uh, board that has been created by the Pierce County Council. As they look to create a plan to implement their, uh, comprehensive plan to end homelessness, and long story short, they're working through that. The goal and objective is to develop what's called a Unified Regional Approach to Ending Homelessness. And, uh, this is something that the Pierce County Council is gonna be looking to consider in two thousand twenty-three. And then they'll be looking to bring on board, um, all the cities and townie, cities and towns in, in Pierce County as a part of that. So. Um, it's in its preliminary phases, but, um, just wanted to let you know that, as you know, the county council did adopt that plan last year. And so now they're simply moving forward with implementing it in the vast city of Lakewood and a number of other cities and towns to participate. So. Again, more to come on that in two thousand twenty, in two thousand twenty-three. Um, likewise, uh, the county is in the process of updating their Unified Sewer Plan. And, um, it's actually started about a year or so ago, um, but it's now gaining some momentum and some steam. And given that we're part of their service area, they're a, and a very key stakeholder. Um, they've asked us to participate in that process, and, uh, so we have several staff that are, are participating in that. Um, their goal and objective is to have an updated Unified Sewer Plan sometime by twenty-twenty-five, so they've got a, got, got a bit of work, got a bit of work to do. Um, also, just a heads up, um, that Pierce County will be moving forward with their, um, two thousand twenty-three point in time count. I think it's sometime in the. Middle to latter part of January, and so if you'd like to participate in that, um, I think I sent you the link on, on how to volunteer, on how to volunteer to, um, to do that. And then, um, as it relates to your calendar, um. Building off of the, um, the event this evening with Gimay City, there'll be a farewell luncheon for that delegation tomorrow at twelve-thirty over at the Tacoma Country and Golf Club. Um, and then later on the week, on, uh, Thursday, December eighth, from six to seven-thirty here at City Hall, actually, in the, in the, um. In the courtroom, we're gonna clear that out and be an opportunity for the community to meet the candidates for, um, the new Lakewood Police Chief position. And, uh, we did release the, uh, names of the six finalists earlier today, and those are on our website. Uh, later on the week, on Friday, Friday morning from ten-thirty to noon, I know we've invited the mayor to come and make some opening remarks to this, but. Uh, the Lakewood Police Department is gonna be sponsoring a, uh, Lakewood Business Public Safety Summit, and that's gonna be done in partnership with our prosecuting attorney team, the Washington Retail Association. Washington Organized Retail Crime Association. Um, and they'll all have representatives to talk about that, and so we've. Invited any and all businesses that would like to come and learn more about that. And then the Saturday. Beginning at four P M. is the Christmas Parade of Lights and Tree Lighting right here at City Hall. Um, I know, I think all of you have agreed to be in the parade and be in a vehicle. Four o'clock, four o'clock over at Park Lodge Elementary School is where it starts. Um, and then the parade will end like it had back in two thousand nineteen, right out in front of City Hall for the tree lighting. And, um, and, uh, Mayor, Mayor, you will be the M C, Master of Ceremonies for, for that and the, uh, tree, tree lighting. So. And with that, that's my report.
We get the log on Santa's sleigh? Yeah, that'd be great. Any questions, Mr. Coffield, other than that? All right, well, thank you very much. Let's, uh, quickly turn to council comments. How about you, Ms. Bell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will make it brief because I'm sure we will be all saying a lot of the same things about how much we enjoyed. Um, meeting with our sister city and, uh, just fellowshipping with them and really knowing, uh. Some more about them and creating that relationship. So that was great, and I was able to go on Sunday yesterday, actually. Um, to the dinner, and that was wonderful. And I also. Want to mention that I always do love hearing from the youth council. Every time that they come and that they, um, present, I just think it's so encouraging. And yes, I will be in the parade on Sunday, so I'm looking forward to that, too. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Very good, and thank you. Councilmember Bokey.
Yeah, I had a, had a wonderful time the other night with the folks from Gimay, I, and I think tonight went very well, and. Um, good, good. Good visit, I guess. I hope they enjoyed it as much as we did. Um. Last council, last official council meeting, and then, uh, do we have a study session next week? So you might want to bring cake, Mr. Whalen.
Yes.
Mayor Whalen. Uh, poor Ms. Farmer, thank you very much for sitting here for the last few years for this.
Next year.
For all your, yeah, and give a bug. I never, I never poked you or anything like that, I don't think, no. Um. But anyway, thank you very much for your service to us and adding a lot to the council, very bright and, um, intelligent, and you're on to. Bigger things, I guess, right? And maybe we'll see each other professionally in the future.
Yeah. I think we have something formalized for the study session for. Councilmember Farmer, but, uh, it's always good to be thankful. So. Councilmember Branstadter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh. This past week, I, I did attend the annual meeting of the Friends of the Lakewood Library. Um, you know, that, and the, to their credit, they are positively focused, looking. Forward. Um, you know, they, 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 they have some, some active. Plans as to how they can help the library in Stillicum. Uh, with, uh, funding to help them with special programming. Um, and they're, uh. Oh, working on coming up with a location in the community to, um. Do a book sale, which is their primarily fundraising and, and, and membership raising program that they're, they're currently. Have all of their inventory of books, uh, removed from the. The closed library building and, 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 and stored, uh, elsewhere, and they're discussing a number of folks about being able to do a venue for a. Sale bef, and then, uh, eventually support a temporary library when one opens. So, um. You know, it's, 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 there, there wasn't very many, much hand wringing about why or why, or where we are. It was all forward-looking, and that's a. Good group of people that have, uh, uh, the community's interest at heart. That, uh. I, uh. I, I, I think that, uh. We were good hosts. For our folks. From, from Gimay, okay? I, I, I think, uh, we did a, uh, that, 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 this, this, this evening, we had the, the right level of decorum. And yet, then broke up into the right level of familiarity. To be able to go, go and do that, and go ahead and do that. Um, and I think maybe it would be good if we could get a. Um. The, 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 a YouTube file of that portion of tonight's meetings that, that they can maybe have, so that they can share it with. Their council and citizens back, uh, that back in Gimay that would, uh, look, look to do that. And, uh, that's another forward-looking, uh, partnership that I think that, that. That we have that has survived the pandemic, uh, healthier than many. That's all I have.
Deputy Mayor Moss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too, I enjoyed the time we spent with our new sister city, so that was great, a lot of fun. Um, as honorary commanders. Uh, Mr. Bueller and I had the opportunity to attend the, um. C-one forty-one. Remembrance ceremony. That was held at McCord, McCordville. Uh, the accident happened in nineteen ninety-two. There was thirteen airmen that was lost. And so they were doing a remembrance in honor of those thirteen members, so. It was, it was a great event, uh, kind of ensemble, but we did have a reception afterwards, and it was great to introduce Mr. Bueller. To, um. Some of the new people that he was not able to make the original. Event, so. So with that, I would like to ask my colleagues if they would support me. Uh, help us to present a proclamation on January third. And it's for one of our own, one of our homegrown. That is now, um, an opera singer. And she has won two. Uh. Academy Awards, and she's up for a third one in twenty twenty-three. She's gonna be performing in, uh, Seattle. Uh, January, in January. And I would like to, if we could, just honor her with a proclamation on January third. That's. Her name is Janaye Bridges. She was part of our Mon, Mon Luther King Heroes. She did a, 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 um. Position that, yeah. So we'd like to invite her to the council.
On her accomplishments and.
Very good, Mr. Coffield.
With that, I think we bet. Consensus, thank you.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Well, and I, last but not least, I wanted to give Councilmember Farmer the almost last word tonight.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'm just gonna, I'm just settling, because I've got a, I've got a big, long list. Um, I actually do have a little bit of a list, but I'll try and go fast. So, um, it was a very busy week. Uh, on Monday, we had the last Sex Offender Policy Board meeting of our, um, our charge. Um, we get. Sometimes we get charged by the legislature to do some things, and so we finished our work and transmitted the reports to the legislature. And I have just queued up an email, and I will send that out. I believe they're already on the website. So our reports are done. Um, and they are looking to replace me, and they are looking to the city of Lakewood, uh, as a first, uh, as a first stop. So if there is somebody who is interested in taking up that mantle. So if there is somebody who is interested in taking up that mantle, I think they're very interested in having the city of Lakewood continue to represent the Association of Washington Cities. Um, so I have already connected, uh, Mr. Mayor and, uh, the city manager with Candace Spock, who is the, who is the government relations person for A W C and, um, is standing in. I'm not sure that they filled, they filled the, that position yet, their staff position. So more to come on that. Uh, on Tuesday, I very much appreciated, uh, meeting with our state delegation and I thought we had a very fruitful conversation. Um, I'm excited to watch you guys from afar to see how the, how the session goes this year. Um, the employee appreciation breakfast, um, I've already, uh, told, um, Ms. McDougal how impressed I was with her, um, it, with the whole operation. Um, it was just a wonderful thank you to employees and, um, I was very honored to be there. So really appreciate being a part of that. And then meeting with, uh, Pierce County Councilmember Janie Hitchen, uh, to, to get those relationships, uh, get that relationship really, really settled. Again, incredibly fruitful conversation and, uh, lots of things seem to already be in motion, uh, just after a couple of days. On Friday, we had, uh, the South Sound Housing, uh, South Sound Housing Affordability Partnership Executive Board meeting, my last. And, um, Mayor will be stepping in until, um, such time as you all can determine, uh, my replacement. Um, but we spoke about the six items that we here have considered, um, for a proposal into the best practices toolkit that Shape is, is putting together. And the next step is to rank them. We've looked at, uh, all of six, all of the six items and, uh, we pretty much don't have any, uh, that we're not opposed to any of the items, uh, but now they're making us pick. And so I checked in with Ms. Spear earlier and, uh, I have a suggested ranking and I will run that by you, uh, by email. And that needs to happen this week. So, um, and this is my last regular council meeting and, um, there's no crying on the dais, so I won't, I won't do that. But it is, it has been an honor. It's been an honor. And I'll, I'll say that again next week at, at the last study session. But it's been an incredible honor to be on the city council and to have worked with all of you. Um, really, really appreciate the spirit in which we come together and work together. I, I've known, I've known many other councils. I've staffed many other councils and Lakewood is unique in, in its sense of family and, uh, willingness to, um, to have a conversation, even though we, we may come to this dais with differing views. And there is respect and I very much appreciate that. So with that, thank you.
Well, thank you. I will start, uh, with my thank you to you first, as opposed to saving it to the last, because it really is very important, obviously, to thank you for your service. You've just been great. Your contributions have been uh, very heartfelt and certainly, uh, educated and supported with good fact. And we really appreciate that because we do work collaboratively and we try to bring to, uh, our roles certainly different perspectives. But we always try to be very respectful and, and grounded in, in as factual a presentation and data as we can from staff. And certainly from our constituents. So you've just have done a great job, Linda Farmer, and we wish you well in your future endeavor as our auditor. I know you do a great job there. I was chiding you about the animal control thing, not knowing that they got rid of that portion of the work, because I was gonna, you know, route all the stray cats in the neighborhood to your direction. But I can't do that now. You, you gotta focus on the big stuff. Yeah, we'll find something. But no, it's really been great. Thank you very much for all of your contributions and support. You'll be missed for sure. Terms of workload, uh, as we know, we had a lot of meetings last week with our legislative delegation. I thought they were fruitful. Uh, it was also great to meet with our council member, Janie Hitchen, on the county priorities. I thought that also was a good conversation. We all attended that with, uh, you know, prepared notes and have an open, open set of asks, which I think were received quite well. This week, of course, we have a ton of stuff going on. I feel like the days are bookended with different meetings, so we will see you at all of them. Uh, the delegation meeting last night for the dinner and certainly the, the event today, I thought was fabulous. It's a great start to a new beginning with a sister city. Nay, I think were treated well and believe that they received the appropriate, uh, decorum and send off back to their city with the good news to share of Lakewood. So that's a, a good thing. And we, of course, have the, the holiday season to celebrate with the Saturday's tree lighting ceremony and parade. So look forward to that with staff. And other than that, thank you all for making it through the meeting. We're adjourned.